I'll call the work session of the GMSD Board of Education to order. Our agenda today is going to focus on capital improvements and I will let Mr. Kathy begin.
Marjorie, Mr. Manuel.
I'm sorry. We're tag teaming, okay. Oh, that's right, your name is first.
Yes. So, we're going to go through our capital improvements list and also a historical perspective of what we've accomplished since we've been a district in three and a half years now. So, we're working diligently and I can't thank Mr. Kathy or Mr. Law enough. They're a two-man wrecking crew. They have to do a lot of things with maintenance and capital improvements and they're the ones who are crafting the RFPs. They're the ones who are making sure that the construction's completed to our requirements. So, they're busy, a couple of individuals for the district. So, let's talk about what we have done. So, if you remember a historical perspective of what happened with our district, when we were first created, we had six months in the 2014 fiscal year and the Shelby County Commission allocates capital improvement funding based on your ADA. And so, what they said was because we were not a recognized official district at that time, we didn't have ADA. So, we didn't get anything for the 2014 fiscal year, those first six months before our school doors opened. The first time that we received capital improvement funding was in 2015 and they gave us funding to do a study. So, we actually paid, they gave us $60,000 and we paid Fleming Architecture to go into all of our buildings. And so, they were looking at roofs, HVACs, restrooms, bathrooms, and they're the ones who created this priority list of essentially what's going to break down first and what needs to be replaced first. And so, from that, they were looking at, like you see there, architectural, mechanical, fire protection, they were looking at all those different components of our schools. So, then we took that list from Fleming and we created our first five-year master plan for capital improvements. And so, they were looking at aesthetics, the outside of the building, energy efficiency, handicap accessibility, they're going through all the different features of our buildings and we inherited a lot of deferred maintenance from Shelby County Schools. So, just so you can see, and y'all are familiar with some of these pictures, some of the deferred maintenance items that we have and still have, we had a lot of roofs that were well beyond their years of usability. And so, because of that, and we actually, I think for some of these, we actually gave the board the list of work orders for how many leaks we're repairing at all of our schools and the damages it's caused. You can see the bathrooms, that's on the list and that's common that we have in a lot of our schools, is bathroom renovations that need to be completed. You can see old air handlers, boiler rooms, those pictures should look familiar. Mr. Kathy, you can go on to the next ones. Things that they identified, this is in the Fleming study where a lot of our ceiling grids, because of the leaks in the roofs, we had ceiling tiles that needed to be replaced. This is actually one that's been fixed on the right Houston High School's library carpet. The state that was in there actually did that last year. This is Houston High School's roof that was actually a strange system from the eighties that had no binding, I think it was rocks, and then it had a membrane and then it had styrofoam and concrete. And so, when there was a leak, it was going right through into the school. And of course, there's a picture of Houston Middle School with the painting and there are things that we haven't been able to accomplish on these lists. So, once again, Fleming Architecture did this study and they came up with the priority list. So, their priority list was based on the years until things break down. So, the priority one items were items, and so, I highlighted that last sentence, items that have failed will reach an unacceptable level of service within five years. So, you see that in the Fleming study, these are the things that are in really rough shape. Then you have priority two items and those are things that'll fail or reach an unacceptable level of service within five to 10 years. So, they're trying to predict when you need to do this roof versus when you need to do this HVAC system. And then, of course, we have a priority three list of items and those are things in the district that are deferrable or desirable, things that we want to improve the aesthetics of the building or to help with our programming. But Fleming wasn't really looking at priority three items, they were just looking at when things are going to break and when we need to replace them. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Kathy just to give you the historical perspective on what we've done, the items that were on the list, because you know, every year the board's been looking at this list of items. And we have been working, but like I said, we inherited a lot of deferred maintenance items. So, Mr. Kathy, with that, you can start going through the list.
Yes, sir. Mr. Manuel asked me to just put a presentation together for you guys to go down memory lane and go through the history of the capital improvements that we've done since the district has become a district. So, I'll go through those briefly and just touch on.
Go back one so you can see, on the title page, we do have the total amount that we've invested in that school to this point. So, you can see what we have, so.
The energy management system at Houston High School, just to give a brief overview and history, when we got the district, we had one school that had a real energy management program and that was Houston Middle School. The other schools were on zone control where you literally had one sensor controlling 10 classrooms. There were no, there was no real good way to do set points, there was no good way to schedule a classroom or do things of that nature. So, we replaced the energy management system at Houston High School year one and it was an old antiquated system, as you can see by this little array of wires and things of that nature. That was one, that was our first year. This was a project that we did also year one. It started as a maintenance project and it ended up as an exterior LED lighting upgrade. So, if you ride around Houston High School, you've got LED lights on all of the exterior wall packs and street pole lights. The Houston High TV studio, we also did in our first summer, here's a before picture where it was literally a old shop full of all different types of things, tools, old equipment, things of that nature. And we took that and renovated and made it into the TV studio, as I think all of you have been in and seen at some point. The turf field project, that was a public-private partnership that we did in cooperation with the Houston High Arts and Athletics Foundation. And that project was done, just to refresh the memory, we knew we were losing the area where the band and the football team practiced for the lateral G project, which took place a year later than we thought it would. But we had the issue of practice space and this solved a lot of those problems. You can practice and play on turf, rain, and it won't wear down the field. So, this project was completed and it was about a $1.3 million investment for the field and also for the jumbo drone that went up at Houston High School.
And so, these numbers that we're looking at, is this what the district spend is or this is what?
This was what the total spend was.
Total spend. So, the only one that's not, all the others are going to be district spend.
Okay.
This one, because it was public-private partnership, is the one that's different.
I think it was $125,000.
So, the district contribution was $125,000.
So, and the 4.19 includes the 1.30?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
The Houston High Cafeteria, we've done renovations there as well, put TVs up on the walls with scrolling menus, made it more of a food court atmosphere, added the Java City Cafe. That required electrical reconfigurations and things of that nature. Sidewalk additions, when we took over this school, it was not walkable from Wilford Boulevard onto the campus. We added sidewalks on both sides, east and west, to bring, be able to put foot and bike traffic onto the campus. We also added sidewalks over by the main parking lot on the east side of campus so that students could have a more walkable, safe path to the school. We also repaved Houston High School. We graded our pavement early on in the district. We actually did that in collaboration with the city. And Houston Middle and Houston High were the ones that easily graded the worst. We repaved the entire campus, it definitely made a.
So, we showed that, because I don't know if y'all remember, especially in that spot right there, there were huge potholes and you couldn't even drive through that area. It was a bad area.
Yes.
The Houston High Choir Room, we did a renovation in that classroom. There were real problems in there just with fitting the kids, risers and anything. So, we worked in collaboration with Houston High School and Dr. Rayburn to make that a more utilizable space. The auditorium, we put in the projector and the screen that's there, that wasn't there before we got the district and I mean, that gets a lot of use for presentations and all different manners of events. The Houston High Roofing Project, Mr. Manuel went over it, that was the original roof to the building, put on in 1989. It had been on Shelby County Schools deferred maintenance list for several years before we inherited the district. So, the HVAC and the roofing project, we did in one summer. It was an investment of roughly $2 million to replace that, and it was a partial replacement. You guys, I'm sure remember that. The HVAC was nearly a full replacement. That takes us to Houston Middle School. The projects here, 240,000, 6,000, these are rough numbers, they're not precise and perfect, but these are certainly right in the ballpark. We completed the paving project and that was the summer of 2015, if memory serves. That campus was in really bad shape in a lot of different ways. So, that was one of our, one of our first projects that we did as a capital project. Here's some more pictures of that. We also put in a hardwood gym floor at Houston Middle School the summer of 2015 and that was a, that was a capital project that, you know, it's one of those that's inch of your priority two, priority three area when you look, when you look at where that would fall. Our middle school teams play basketball on these courts, every youth basketball games takes place in our school. So, this was a good project and PE classes are using those all day long at Houston Middle School. So, we completed that in the summer of 2015. It was an investment of roughly $100,000. We're still looking to do more of these projects, but the water filling stations have been a big hit at Houston Middle School. We're looking at to do more in areas where the walls don't have to be banged out, it really matters where the plumbing is, if you can just take water fountain for water fountain or if you have to reconfigure plumbing. But we have those now at Houston Middle and we have them at Riverdale and several places in the new building and in the old building, we put one in. The only schools we're lacking now are Farmington and Houston High School. So, we're trying to look at spaces that don't involve, and then maybe in the future, spaces that do involve banging out walls and rerouting plumbing. Those are nice benefits to the students and faculty and just in general. The library carpeting, that was another project that was long overdue and in need to be done. And that takes us to Dogwood. Dogwood's had a capital investment of roughly $2,126,000 and we'll go through the projects that we've completed there. This roof is, as you all are well aware, one that was not in good condition. And so, we did this project, just like we did at Houston High School, where we replaced the roof and the rooftop units all in one summer. And you can see some pictures there of what was coming out when we were taking out insulation and things of that nature, the condition. And then, the finished product, which we were very proud of.
Did the city help us with that?
They did.
Mary Ann, do you remember?
An extra $1 million. Now, we had a million that Mr. Kathy had in his capital improvement budget because it was essentially a $2 million project.
Million and a half.
Million and a half. So, some of it, he had the HVAC portion.
You're right, right.
But the city did come on board for a million dollars. Dogwood also got a new energy management system when we replaced the HVAC units. And Dogwood got a preschool playground as well in order to be able to take the preschool program across our district, whereas previously we were only offering at Farmington Elementary.
And the key there is that it's handicap accessible. So, it's got a hard surface that you can actually, if a student in a wheelchair could wheel out into that playground.
The modular classrooms, a large capital, the necessary investment given our situation, this was the amount just for the site work, that's to put the gravel down, dirt work and all of the systems that have to be connected to those modulators where it gets really expensive. You've got to connect sprinkler, fire alarm, intercom, all of the systems that are in the building have to come outbuilding and that's really what drives the site cost up on those modular classrooms.
And does that include both years with an extension?
That was just, this doesn't include lease payments, this was just the initial capital investment.
Yes, it's all in with the first batch that we had and then the second batch that we had.
Here's what the second batch cost on the next line.
I'm sorry, there you go.
There was an additional 125 to put the next two classrooms on.
So, a total of $445,000 on that?
Yes.
And that takes us to, we also did a sidewalk addition at Dogwood. That was a request that we actually got from PTA at the time and administration that needed more space on car rider line for car rider drop-offs, so that was an addition that we did there. We also re-carpeted the lot, the carpet in Dogwood's library. That takes us to Farmington Elementary School and this was one of the first capital projects that we actually got approval for by the Shelby County Commission. I think we're going to go over this later, but it was really odd the first year, 2014, the way that they funded us with capital. They asked us to submit a list of projects we did and they just gave all the municipalities a blanket one-time amount.
Not based on student enrollment.
Right, right.
And so, we used that first amount to do the replacement of the exterior windows and all of the storefront glass at Farmington. So, this was kind of a before and after picture. The old window is here on the right and the new windows are on the left. These were single pane, not energy efficient, egress issues with being able to open and close, so these are.
And they were brittle too. So, we were having issues, the glass was sold, that it was breaking. And I think we even talked about a baseball went through and.
Just left a perfectly round hole.
Wow, that's weird.
So, we put in these triple pane windows, they're secondary means of egress in the event of an emergency situation and they are much more energy efficient. We did the modular classrooms at well at Farmington. This was the one-time cost for the site work for the six classrooms and the bathrooms that we added there. We put new exterior lights in the front entrance, it was a constant complaint that we got that when you came out, it was really dark in that, in that front entrance area. Farmington also got an energy management system upgrade. Farmington also got all interior exterior surfaces painted this previous summer. Farmington also got the library re-carpeted. And that takes us to Riverdale. I don't think this one needs a whole lot of explanation, we're all aware of this one and the investment.
One question I would have, is that when you talk about the investment, was there anything that we've done to the, what was the existing building to Riverdale as a part of that or was that just kind of left?
The only things that were done to the existing building, the existing building, we renumbered all classrooms and put in new signage there because their numbering system was just, it didn't make sense. Also, the classrooms that had to be connected up front, this is a picture of one, or two of those classrooms that had to be renovated. They got new ceiling tile and grid, new LED lights, those classrooms did. But other than that, in the whole building, we have not done very many projects.
The fencing, we added fencing in between the kindergarten building and the main building to secure the campus.
Okay.
So, there is, it acts as one building, so when you get access to that building.
Yeah.
And before, they were having to badge students in and out, so they were having security issues, that was something that helped the main building.
Thank you.
And of course, you have as part of this project, the renovations that occurred in the back. So, there's a basketball court, there's a field back there, there's additional teacher parking, there's a playground back there, a specialized playground, so there were additions for the whole school.
Sure.
And then, one of the things that we did early on in the district, rekeyed all the exterior doors in the district and that had a price stagger roughly $20,000 to where we're now, we're on a master key system. And I think that completes my historical of what we've done where and kind of a historical overview of what we've done with capital up to this point.
And you did, Mr. Bland and Mr. Pierce could talk briefly on this, but we do get a Safe Schools Grant and they are make, have made significant improvements in our cameras. So, Mr. Bland, tell us the amount of.
Over, I would say, the last three years, if you're correct me if I'm wrong, but we probably replaced over 20 cameras.
More than that?
Yeah. That's a low number, but we try to take each school building and upgrade what they have because the old cameras, you can't really make out anything on them, so they're kind of used in the event of a nervous.
Does, do the cameras, who has access to the feed?
Mr. Bland, I do, the SROs do.
The administration.
The administration does.
Okay, is it, is it constantly monitored and if so, by whom?
It's, it's, I wouldn't, I would say it's constantly monitored. It records any motion, so any motion detecting passes through the camera, day or night, it's constantly recorded. And the SROs monitor it.
During the school days.
During the school days.
When they're at their desk.
Or if we did, it saves Mr. Kathy a lot of times trips to the schools because we do have an alarm system on all the schools when it is triggered and there's motion sensors in the schools. When it gets triggered, then one of the things he does is he can get on the cameras in the evening or the principals can get on the cameras in the evenings and check and see if there's any breach in the security or was it a poster falling off the wall or.
Or balloon.
Yes, something that may.
They run in Mr. Bland's office as well.
Yes, they also run in Mr. Bland's office during the day.
Well, I know, but Mr. Bland's not always in his office. I'm just curious.
Right. So, that gives us, and we will tag team some of this, Mr. Kathy, gets us to our previous, I wanted to show the old five-year strategic plans because what has happened, we don't have the funding that we need to hit all of these projects. And what you see happens is this is where we started with the original plans, projects get rolled from year to year to year when they don't get accomplished. So, when we started out, of course, that fiscal year 15 was when we were first making our strategic plan, we were brand new as a district and the only funding that we had for capital improvements was for the Fleming Study. Then when we start the fiscal year 16 is when we really start getting the ADA funding from the county commission and we can start making those improvements. So, you can see in the fiscal year 16, the things that were on the list were, we accomplished three of the items and two of them we did not. The Riverdale boiler replacement was one that kept getting pushed on the, from year to year because it was, it was functional and it was working at that time.
And I do have a point of clarification because I think we're going to talk about this in a little bit. That number for the Riverdale boiler replacement is straight from the Fleming Study and that is just a straight boiler dies, replace boiler with boiling number.
Right, not a change.
Not a full system change number.
Right.
And then, of course, the ADA, the ADA upgrades is substantially more than that. This is from the old plan. We know that it would be hardware on doors, it would be changing restrooms and once we start, we have to be all in on those projects. So, that's one of the concerns that we have, that is once we take that on, it could be a substantial.
Is Dogwood the only one?
No, they all, we only had ADA upgrades at all of our schools, it was just the first one that was on the list.
Okay.
And there was no rhyme or reason to why that one was first, it was just.
Just curious.
Yeah, we just had a list of our schools, so we, I think we put one every single year that we were doing ADA upgrades at each of the schools, but that has not been accomplished to this, to this day. But I am proud that we've gotten the projects that we do have done, completed and that gets us to fiscal year 17. Mr. Kathy, do you want to talk about that one?
For fiscal year 17?
Sure.
These are, we got all of these completed with the exception of Riverdale's boiler replacement, Dogwood's ADA upgrades, which had rolled from the previous year. And then, Farmington ceiling tile and grid replacement, we went out to bid for that last year, we got one bid and it was for $723,000. So, that project did not get accomplished this past summer because of the lack of response from contractors and the one contractor that did respond, it was just so high, not, not within the budget. So, that rolled over to this previous year's plan. The ones that we did accomplish, we accomplished the Houston High re-roof, Houston High HVAC unit replacement, we got Riverdale's portables removed and got the green space added back. We did get Farmington painted and we did continue our lease payments and get our additional modulators installed. So, those were all accomplished, there were three that were not.
So, that gets us to where we currently are in our five-year plan and none of these projects have been, obviously, because it's this fiscal year, completed yet, but the board has approved some of these projects and so, we're in the process of either, you know, working with architects to go to bid and put out the RFPs for these. The rest of those are on the list, I think essentially is what the board needs to talk about today. And then, of course, the future fiscal years, we can talk about also, or CIP plans. But new elementary school has been approved at $27,000. I think it's important to highlight and this is something that we said to the BMA when we had our first meeting, the price per square foot number was based off of Riverdale's construction cost. And since that time, we have had the flooding, the hurricanes in Florida and in Texas, and so, the construction market has changed. And so, we don't know what we're going to see when we go out to bid. It could be, we could see what our architects are guessing is 200 to $210 a square foot. So, know that that 27 million may not be what the price per square foot we get when we go out to bid. But that's for discussion. Of course, we have central office space and then the HVAC replacement, we approved that at the last board meeting, that we're going to go out to bid for those projects and Mr. Kathy does have that funding in his budget. And with that, Mr. Kathy, do you have the next?
The next, which.
Is this where it ends or do you have fiscal year 19 and other parts of that fiscal year plan?
No, that's.
Or do you have a hard copy of that?
That's where it ends.
Okay, go back to eighteen. So, we have the other, because we're going to pull up the other one. So, I think before we dig into the projects and the board gets ready to discuss the capital improvements, I think it's important to talk about our growth needs and also enrollment figures in the, in the district. And so, Mr. Bland is going to talk briefly on what we see. He has just completed the process of rolling up all of the students from grade levels. So, we're predicting next year, if we have our current kindergarteners, we're going to move them up to first grade. He's also completed the transfer process. So, I think it's going to be a difficult time in student services and y'all also may receive some emails, but I think what we talked about is there is no more capacity at our schools. So, the only transfers that were granted this year were our employees and then also the residents who wanted to go from school to school. And the reason that we kept the residents moving was because it was pretty much an even number. So, the families wanting to go from Dogwood to Farmington to Riverdale were pretty even. I think it was 20, 21 and 16. And so, it wouldn't make sense to deny those because you would have the same numbers at your schools, it didn't have an impact on the space of the schools.
And would that, is that for everything except the high school?
Except, yes.
Okay, so all, so all.
Yes, that's a point of clarification because, so we're talking about the elementary and middle schools. Now, at the high school, we have Honors Academy, Leadership Academy, we got through currently enrolled, so Mr. Bland's going to go through all those.
Sure, okay, okay.
Because high school's always different.
A little different just because we have that.
We do have extra space at the high school.
Thank you, Mr. Kathy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Kathy, while we're, can you?
Yes, sir.
Does the board need copies of our current five-year plan, the five-year strategic plan that we have for facilities?
I brought mine.
I brought mine.
Okay, if you want us to make a copy, we can do that while he's going through.
Just a picture for a second.
Mr. Kathy, can we just print that page for us?
Just one, please.
I have it at home.
Yeah, just print it for us just so we can all have a hard copy.
Yes, sir.
All right.
So, we'll go school by school. The first box, the yellow box, you'll see on the elementary schools, those are the projected kindergarteners. We, that's the number, we cannot predict, we can't predict how many kindergarteners will show up to the school register. So, what we did, we would use an average from what we typically saw in the past from those schools. So, Dogwood, we're giving them, we're projecting 125 kindergarteners in the 18, 19 year old up. So, the first graders are current kindergarteners. So, you'll see that for every grade, we just roll those kids up, add it in, the 125 kindergarteners. So, we put, we would put those at a base and the numbers, the first through fifth, the numbers that you see do include the current transfers that are there at the school. They do not include any new transfers, but the current transfers that are already there because those are.
The ones that were accepted in the previous year.
Yes, in the previous year. So, that's what I was saying, so if you ask, why would we predict 125 kindergarten students at Dogwood? Because looking at the first grade, second grade, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, that's the average number of residents that we see in those grades. So, when you see the 149 or the 145, those are including transfer students.
So, is that difference between the 129 and the 191 from first to second, all transfers?
No.
Or is that some, is that just a spike?
Yes, that one class has a big class.
And you'll see, Riverdale has the same, I think the fifth grade will get there, but that's a, that's a pretty big class it is.
It was.
But for the most, we see an average number, like we've granted an average number of transfers, it's been pretty consistent.
Okay, I was just curious, so that's just a, you don't, can't plan for that, that's just a.
You have those. You, you have those.
Okay.
Uh, and then the next line you see will be new employee transfers. So in the, in Dogwood, we have five, uh, employees system-wide that will, well, we have five students of employees system-wide that would like to attend Dogwood, uh, five kindergarten and one in fourth. Uh, you go down to residents, these are students that are currently zoned for Farmington or Riverdale that would like to go to Dogwood. And then you see the totals at the bottom, and then you can see, uh, how we stacked up with, uh, Mr. Bland's projec-, with the demographer's projections. I also put the current enrollment. Uh, so if everything pans out and we get the hundred and twenty-five kindergarteners, um, we would be at nine eighteen, and we're currently at nine twenty-nine. So we are starting to guide our style.
And that nine twenty-nine is based off of?
That's who's in the building.
Right now.
Residents and transfers right now, as of yesterday.
So that's, or that's not, that's of like the August number that we heard?
No, this is yesterday. All, all of the current enrolled numbers you see will be yesterday.
That's residents and transfers and everybody, so that's all in.
Including preschool?
No preschool. Preschool will never be included in our numbers.
Okay. And so that's not included in the, so when you're looking at the capacity of the school, you take out those classrooms?
Yes.
Okay, I was just, okay.
Yeah, so they typically-
And we typically have two classrooms for them?
Yes, but that shouldn't have, and that shouldn't have it, so that shouldn't have an impact on, we take them out at maximum, optimum capacity. We're not, we're just saying that's a separate program.
Okay.
With the space and students, that's why you don't include them in the number.
Okay. And how many rooms would we associate with preschool? I mean, are there certain rooms that are dedicated just to preschool, other than their classrooms?
It depends on the enrollment of the school, um, Ms. Huffman is-
She just stepped out.
Typically, it's, typically, it's one, it's one per school, but, you know, some have two because of the numbers. But that's gonna change year to year.
Okay, okay, just curious, okay, thank you.
But when we have the new elementary school that we have opened, we're predicting that there'll be one per-
Per school, okay.
Any questions about Dogwood?
So we're predicting a drop of, of eleven students?
So, I don't know if you want me to talk about the priority levels, but I anticipate there may be a little bit more.
Because we have denied siblings now.
Okay.
Um, what you may see is there may be transfer students that are included in those other numbers at the top that choose to, um, take their, all their family to another school.
Okay.
But yes, but this also doesn't include-
I see what you're saying, so we are accepting no transfers, so not, and historically, siblings, because that was what we, okay.
And so now what you may see is a slight drop from that number. But the reason that we include, uh, the demographer's projections on here is that nine eighteen number doesn't include any growth.
Right.
So know that there is a growth factor that we're assuming is going to come to each of our schools.
Mm-huh.
What that number is, is the, the great mystery that we play every year when we look at build-out, when we look at, uh, the transition of the city, and that's some of, uh, the projections from our demographer.
Farmington, the same, uh, the one twenty-five number, we use at every school, except for Riverdale. Uh, in the past three years, they traditionally have been over the one twenty-five number, so you'll see a little bit larger number. Uh, same thing, you have the new employees, a total of eleven new residents, uh, zoned for Dogwood or Riverdale. Twenty-one, for a total of eight forty-two. So you do go down, you start, again, start that downward spiral with that Farmington, uh, to three oh six six.
Wait, 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 go back one step, sorry. I'm making my notes. And you'll, you'll send this to us?
Yes.
So we don't have to write all this, describe it all?
I know, but that helps me process.
You're overachieving, I know, I'm making sure that I'm not slacking. Okay, thank you, got it.
In my opinion, I could be wrong, I think Riverdale is where we might see the biggest number of, uh...
Yes, I would agree.
The siblings that will get denied, and they may-
And also the growth too, Bo, and the-
Well, yeah, they grow.
They might balance out potentially, is what you're saying.
They, they might balance out. Riverdale's been growing, good job, Mr. Bland. They've been growing a lot here the last two or three years. Uh, so, but you do see, um, that's a big drop from nine forty-five to nine oh three, uh, because we did have students to move out of the district. Uh, and once you move out, uh, going forward, we are, we have not approved those to return next year. And they, Riverdale had the biggest number, um, students applied for eligible circumstances. They can remain for the remainder of this year, but next year, they will have to attend school Arizona.
Well, and I would assume you'd also have a, you have a larger number of transfers, maybe in fifth grade too, no? Or that, that's moving out?
Uh, but I can tell you how many were rolling off, uh, transfers. It's, it's, it's not a huge number.
Okay, so that's more in the middle school, the big number, or number Riverdale having a big transfer number, but...
Questions, Riverdale? There it is, the one seventy-five. That's the big number. Um, so again, those, those students will be there until they exit, unless they move out of the district. Um, or if they move in general, we not allow those to return next year.
And the difference, say that again?
So once you've moved, you apply for an eligible circumstance transfer.
Which is good for that, end of that one year, so if you're moving in, October, November, we'll let you finish the year with us. But you have to reapply for a transfer if you're gonna stay with us, you're not granted.
Right, right.
Just 'cause you lived here, that-
Right, doesn't give you the, doesn't blanket you in.
Yes.
And so, um...
And so we're denying those, is what you're saying?
Yes, 'cause there's no room.
And Riverdale is considered one school K through eight, so that if you were in, say, in fifth grade, you get to move to sixth grade, under our current policy. Versus if you were at Dogwood or Farmington in fifth grade, you have to, you would not be able to move, yeah, okay.
And so that is, um, some of the angst that we had during this process, is there are students who, uh, had previously attended Dogwood and Farmington, and they were not granted transfers to Houston Middle School. And that's, um, one of the challenges that we talked about is, uh, and what I shared with this board, is the fact that it makes me sad for families, um, but it's also a problem for us at the high school level. Because we need, we, we think that our students are the best prepared to roll onto the high school. If they've come through Riverdale, if they've come through Dogwood, and Farmington, and Houston Middle School, they're the best prepared for us. And so we need those students to, to that nineteen-hundred goal for us at the high school, but we're losing them at that middle school level. So it's just a, a challenge of our current world that we're in.
Houston Middle, the purple number you see, those are resident, oh, those are residents only. Uh, so they're, they're zoned to, those are residents of zone Farmington and Dogwood. Uh, residents that are zoned Riverdale that would like to attend Houston Middle are included in that new resident number. So those are only residents that you see in two ninety-seven. Uh, we did not include any roll-up, uh, transfers from fifth grade from Dogwood or Farmington.
And the new residents, is it anticipation of people moving in?
No, the new residents are, they're zoned for Riverdale.
They're resident transfers, so we're saying, they're new transfers of residents.
You said that, I was putting the new, hold on, hold on, I'm writing quickly.
And so we didn't, we didn't wanna confuse you, because that is not all the resident transfers that exist in the seventh and eighth grade.
Completely, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so that's the difference. So this, that's why we see a two ninety-seven number versus a three forty number, because this includes the transfers that have been granted there. So these are just the, this year's transfer process, we only granted twenty-two transfers to Houston Middle School. And twelve of those were residents, so it's, it's a movement.
Right.
Good. Houston High School tells, uh, a little bit different story. Of course, we have more capacity, we have more space at Houston Middle. Uh, so you can see the new employees, you can see the Honors Academy, Leadership Academy, Fine Arts Academy. Also with that three ninety-six number, those are only residents. We did not include, again, any roll-up from Houston Middle or Riverdale that were transfers. So that three ninety-six, uh, residents, you have the academies. The currently enrolled, uh, students, those are the students that rolled from Houston Middle and Riverdale that applied.
So that's, so those are the numbers that were accepted into those academies?
Yes.
That, okay, non-resident?
Yes.
Okay.
And then the currently enrolled, those are students that applied for eligible circumstances. They applied to come back next year. Of course, we have the space there, so they were granted.
Sure, sure.
Or else, it could also be-
The roll-up.
Yeah.
From a, Riverdale and Houston Middle.
Right.
No residents.
And the, like, the Honors Academy, where it's twenty-nine in the ninth grade and then two in the tenth grade, is that just new people coming in?
Those are new.
Okay, so those are people who have applied that weren't there previously?
That's correct. So that's, that's why we keep clarifying, so that's why we say, these are new. This number includes Honors Academy, Leadership Academy, Fine Arts Academies that are rolling up. So this is just for you to see.
Now, that-
That's interesting.
That twenty-nine number does include, uh, Riverdale, Houston Middle.
Okay, makes sense, right.
That were accepted into Honors Academy.
Resident or non-resident?
Non-resident.
That's what they, okay, so just non-resident, okay.
Questions? And then it's kind of a summary of everyone except, uh, residents. So those are by school, the employees. You can see, we accepted zero current enrolled, zero siblings, and zero city employees throughout. Uh, I think we had maybe three city employees apply, they were, um, crossing doors. Uh, and the only place that we went to their priority level was Houston High School.
And I, I think when we get ready in March or April to talk about our transfer policies, that may be, uh, something that we discuss, is if those people, uh, for the city are serving in capacities.
This is school, at our school?
Yes, well, and we treat that differently, but, um, do we move city employees above siblings? I don't know if that's a, a discussion that we really had, so, um, that we have really had, that may be something. Because looking at the, the low numbers that we have of city employees, it doesn't have a big impact on the district. But because it falls after siblings, if I wanted to get to the city employees, it would have a dramatic impact on our school districts by granting those transfers. So I think, well, that may be a point of discussion for us, too, is to look at potentially moving city employees up.
How many city employees are we talking about? How many kids?
In the other schools, Mr. Bland, would you have to elaborate?
I have to pull it up, but, I mean, it's-
It's a handful.
Single digits. But you also have to, you also, if we did that, you also have to skip the currently enrolled, which are students that are currently sitting in the schools that were denied.
So that's, that's our issue, is to get to the city employees, which we think is, is a value. We'd have, we would have to let in all those students, which would dramatically have an impact on our school numbers.
Questions? Uh, we anticipate letters going out, if, if people are asking you, um, we're gonna print. As soon as we leave out of here, we're gonna start printing letters. So they should go out tomorrow. Hopefully, they'll get them, uh, Saturday, Monday.
So if you have a student, you're in Dogwood District, but you have a student in Riverdale, the siblings will not be able to follow, they will go to Dogwood, correct?
Correct.
No, 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 not if you're a resident.
For res-, all residents-
No, residents, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
These siblings aren't in school yet.
It doesn't matter, so they, if they're res-
All residents were approved.
It's the, it's the family who lives in Cordova, for example. And so they have a child, yeah, so they have a child who's in third grade, and they have a kindergarten who's come up. They were denied, but all resident transfers were granted.
So even though their child is not registered for school as yet, at this given moment-
They would be in the kindergarten.
But the cautionary tale is that could change any year to-
It might not always be even, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Is that, it worked out today that it even, but if you take into account their siblings, you could have, yeah, you could have a little bit of a skewed school-to-school relationship.
I think that's- You can't guarantee someone that-
Intro district transfers.
We can only guarantee, well, we can only guarantee a seat in the school that you're zoned to today.
That's right.
Otherwise, we go year to year, and we assess, uh, assess where we're in.
And so every transfer's, and to your point, is always year to year.
Yes.
Always a subject to change in the letter, yes.
We're including that in the letter this year.
Okay, thank you, good.
That's perfect.
That's why the houses are going so fast.
Um, waitlist denied, we denied five hundred and sixteen. So we'll place those five sixteen on the waitlist, and I think, I opened it yesterday, uh, we've already placed maybe thirty kids on top of that five sixteen, so, um...
Increasing that, maybe, yeah.
So it's about five, maybe five fifty right there. So we have to go back to the waitlist with that again, but I don't anticipate we would have to do that.
And what would, just a question, what would cause us to go get someone off the waitlist, except for the high school?
For me, it's usually, um, and if, someone who would have gotten in if they'd been paying attention. And we do, it takes their business, and we do our best to blast all of our employees, to tell everyone, to say, it's a transfer time, make sure you're applying for a transfer, but there always seems to be somebody who's, I thought I applied for the transfer, I don't understand, I, so, to answer your question, it would be an employee, or it'd be a resident who-
Just didn't click on.
-dropped the ball, and would have gotten in under the priorities that we looked at, but we have to look at numbers once again. So that would be the answer.
Okay.
We would not, um, I do not predict that we would go back and then add siblings or the other categories.
Thank you.
Just like they in Texas.
Yes.
Thank you.
Totally forgot.
I'm sitting here going, did I register?
So, at this point, I think, I have one more thing to point out, and it would be my desire to have this over the board to talk about, um, really marching orders, or how, how you want us to proceed with some of our recommendations. There is one project that you'll see discrepancy between on the two pages. This was the original page that Mr. Kathy had highlighted, that shows the boiler replacement at Riverdale. And so it listed just six hundred and eighty thousand as a replacement for the, for the boiler there. As you know, we had an incident over the, um, winter break, where the, several lines froze, and there are fifteen classrooms, uh, I believe that's number fifteen, that actually had the return system, that those pipes froze. And so when we get ready to go to H V A C, we're gonna have to, to decide, are we going to stick with the boiler-chiller system, and we will get an insurance claim for that, and just stick with the same system that we have, and replace those air handlers in those rooms? Or is this the time to go ahead and pull the trigger and remove the whole system from Riverdale? It is always a problem, um, this time of year, because you can't switch easily from chiller to boiler. And so I'm sure you, you get these emails every year, where a parent is going to the classroom, and it is like a boiler, it is hot in that classroom, because it's hot that day outside. And, and if we look ahead and see that we're gonna have another cold day, that's always an issue for us at Riverdale. But know that in Mr. Kathy and Mr. Laws investigating this project and looking at the, the full detail of this project, at this time, it, it would be more than six hundred and eighty thousand dollars. They're projecting, uh, anywhere from two-point-one to three million dollars for this project, based on what the architects and contractors have said. Because if you're going to go ahead and do this, that means you're taking out all the plumbing that's running in the ceilings. You're going ahead and taking out the ceiling grid, the, the tiles. And at that point, you might as well go ahead and do the lighting, because we talked about, all this has to come down for them to do that. So know that that's why you see the difference between the six hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the Riverdale project on one page versus the three million on the other. The three, the three million's an all-in with ceiling grid, grid-
Ceiling tile, lighting.
Lighting, and switching over to H V A C units.
With the management system?
Um, I don't know about the management.
There's a time with the management system. Okay.
Thank you, and we'll begin discussion. I'm gonna ask, so that we make this as productive as possible, that if you wanna make a comment, that you wait for the chair to recognize you, so that everybody can hear everyone's comment, and we don't end up talking over each other. So, the floor is open for discussion.
Can you?
Amy?
I, I was curious. Raise your hand.
You don't have to raise it, I just know.
I was curious about the timeline. I think Mr. Kathy had mentioned in the previous meeting that it would be tight. What is the timeline for having to totally install a new system?
If we're going to do it, we need to know yesterday. We still have to put the, we still have to bring on the architect and chemical engineers, we have to get drawings done, we have to get bid documents out, we have to get it back, awarded. You guys know, we have to bring it to you to award the bid.
Right, right.
Uh, and then construction will be a tight timeline this summer. Uh, we think it's doable, but we need to start, we need to know today. If, if we're going down that road, or if we're just replacing the fifteen air handlers that are in the classroom, removing all the fire for the time being.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Um, probably to your question, we are gonna just prioritize, but we think it's best we're not gonna be operating off of, among other.
Yeah. If we decide to go new unit, did I hear you say that if we just, when we decide to switch to air, we have fifteen classrooms that would have issues? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So would there, I mean, what-
Go ahead, Ms. Kathy.
I can be happy to answer that. We're gonna have that issue regardless for the next two months, because we haven't replaced the air handlers. When spring comes around, those, those classrooms aren't gonna have A C, so we're gonna have to bring in some temporary measure, and to, and to leave the school-
Even if we go boiler?
Regardless of what we do.
Okay, okay.
For the next two months, we're gonna have to bring in a temporary measure for those- For the next two months, we're gonna have to bring in a temporary measure for those 15.
Until the work is done regardless of.
Okay, perfect, okay, that's, okay, thank you.
Well, thanks, Mr. Kathy. What would be a temporary measure, like a portable air unit?
A portable air unit like we've done for the three classrooms, the three classrooms that were there that we couldn't get the heat backup for.
My question would be, is the approximate cost we're looking at to bring in those air handlers?
So the cost per, per air handler is $600 per month? So you multiply them by 15. Now, we're submitting all of that to insurance, it should be a part of the claim.
Sure.
But that's the approximate cost of $600 per month times 15 would be your cost on the temporary measures. And that's part of your maintenance budget.
Can I ask you one question?
Of course you can.
Yes. Just to clarify what we're trying to accomplish here. Do we, are we, are we trying to prioritize from just this list? I'm just trying to understand what our goal is.
I think it isn't just from this list.
Okay.
I think the objective for this board is, which is why I wanted to go through the historical piece, know that if you talk to Aaron, he's gonna say, we've got so many things to fix in the district that we gotta fix HVACs, we gotta take care of it. It's Maslow's hierarchy of needs. We gotta take care of the stuff that we need. But know that, and they're seeing all the work orders, they're seeing all the repairs that we have to do. But I know that if we just stick to that, there are things that I know that the community also has priority three needs and things that we wanna add also. We try to do a balance, so for example, when you see like the, when we started the Houston Middle School basketball court, under Mr. Kathy's smaller budget, we try to hit some of those smaller projects that can have an immediate impact on our school programs or functions. So I would say, no, it doesn't have to be all in on this list, but know that the Fleming architect study would say, these are your must-things that need to be replaced. But.
To keep our school's function.
To keep our school's function, but know that there's a balance.
Completely understand that. So if that's the case, I guess what I would look for is priority one, priority two, priority three. You had talked about the fact that their plumbing was obviously more focused on priority one and priority two.
They didn't have a priority.
That's right. So you being, you know, four years going into five years into the district, seeing where we are as a community, knowing kind of what your vision is and what you see as going to, what would you say are any things that are missing from this list so that we don't miss them? I mean, I think you're so much more in touch with what's going on with you and your team. And I know that when this list was done, it was done before we had really experienced ourselves as a community. And I know it was just updated, but I mean, I just, I just wonder if there's anything from a priority three or even a priority two or priority one that you would say, I would add this to the list. Not having a dollar amount, just a project.
Sure.
Before he answers that, as the liaison to the facilities committee, we have this list prioritized for you. Not basically prioritized, but as the years, as the years come before us, we have this list of things that have been pushed. We have the 19 of things that we see need to be done. We have the year 20 of things we see need to be done, and a five-year priority list. So I think we have identified all the needs on our CIP, that there's nothing out there that we see that needs to be added, unless there's something in an emergency wise.
Yes.
That might have to come up.
Right, so the caveats that I would say to that are, and this will be something that.
Like a tornado that blows through and takes off the front of Houston High School again.
So I wanna talk about the safety and security, which is something that we are currently working with. Lieutenant Shield at our schools, and we're working with our school administrations, and we're going through all of our plans, and we've actually got meetings scheduled with all the schools. We're gonna go through all the drills. I know that facility-wise, there are some safety things that aren't the bigger dollars like this, but could be 200 to 300,000 dollars worth of stuff that I'll come and recommend in March. So some examples, and we haven't got these prices of things, and we gotta look at logistics. So at Houston High School, for example, the front entrance, if we could take where there's a current window, where there's a concrete table out front in that bay, and put a door there that buzzes parents directly into the office instead of into the lobby, that'll be the type of request that I'll be bringing to the board. Or for example, to connect the two buildings, the same way that we connected the buildings at Riverdale and had fencing that people can't scale over, we could connect the A building and the main building at Houston High School by putting fence, and it would be tall fencing, but 10-foot-high steel fencing that connects the A building to the greenhouse, like you know that one little section right there, and then on the backside, the A building to the gym. So there could be smaller things that I'll come before the board to talk about these projects after we conclude this process. Houston Middle School, we've also talked about, how can we secure that entrance? And we had looked in the past about putting.
We had a whole plan.
An area out front there so that parents get buzzed into that area. And then two, at Dogwood, they have started taking steps, and that's why they moved their front desk to that back hallway to look at some type of secure wall there. So know that there are smaller projects based on the current environment that we're seeing in our safety analysis that I'll come before the board to ask to add those to this.
But are we, I mean, knowing that this is something that it isn't, that's a need. I mean, we need to do these things. We are wanting to put this on a priority list to go to the city with this on that list, correct?
Well, I think what we need to do is, we need to look at this list and contemplate what we've heard, including what the superintendent just, and let's go ahead and prioritize them. And then we can have the discussion of what do we go to the city with?
What can we pay for?
What can we pay for, what can, do we need to take to the city? I agree, there's a number of things on this list that I think the city would be more than interested in helping us accomplish.
Right.
So that's, but that's two separate conversations. We need to prioritize what we feel needs to be done in 20, in this, this, tomorrow.
Yeah, this summer.
How we want, how we want Mr. Kathy and Mr. Laws to spend their summer vacation, is basically what you're running.
Where are the bathrooms on this list?
They have not been a, they were identified in the Fleming study, but because of the cost, they weren't identified as one of the higher items. Because we see, we're really talking about things that were, I forgot the breaking point here, were 65,000.
You could put them under Dogwood or any ADA upgrades because if you start.
If you start working on that, you're gonna have those bathrooms or not.
They're not ADA required, so you're gonna have to go all the way.
And so if you touch a bathroom, you make it ADA, and then you have to make the entire school ADA? Or is it just this area?
Whatever you touched.
That's a gray area.
Okay, okay.
Depends on how you interpret it.
But yes, you could be interpreted that you need to go.
And I know that's, that's a lot of parents' interests, and I know from having lunch at Dogwood, that the students' interest is to have the bathrooms, okay, but.
Mr. Law had done.
I don't think there's anything they can do about that.
Yeah.
Mr. Law, what was your prediction, 40,000 in the bathrooms to the ADA?
No, 100,000 per bathroom.
Oh, per bathroom, so girls and boys, yes.
So if the bank, so if you have a girls and boys bathrooms that are sitting side by side, you'd be 100,000 per bathroom.
And that's the ADA and new tile, new fixtures, so that's all in? Or is there any, would there be any additional cost on top of that?
I think the additional cost may be some architect.
Okay. So that's a good estimate, 700,000?
Anyone else?
When would we have the dialogue about the, kinda looking at the numbers as they go, once we prioritize this and then what we would be requesting from the city? Is that a different day?
No, we're gonna do it today.
Okay, so we're just stair stepping?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
We're stair stepping, we're gonna prioritize what we feel we need to do for the district, and then look at that list and the priority, and what can we accomplish and what can we take to the city with, with the hope that the city can do it. So I think picking the project is as important as anything, is an enticement for the FAC to go ahead and.
Well, if we're looking at this list, and this is the list that we would kinda go from and everything about prioritizing, I would add Houston Middle is in addition to Houston Middle. I don't see that on here, but I could be missing it. Is that along with the school safety?
Do you wanna address that?
I think that's what y'all need to discuss. That's why I showed the numbers. I think the real question about, because we've talked, and I think that's something that we can't talk about enough. So the question that I had, and I had it the other night at the VMA meeting, is the new elementary school, do we need to save land, or do we think that there's gonna be a growth impact on the new elementary school? There's, and you saw the numbers that we did complete build up. I do not see a scenario where we would ever have to add on to that elementary school for elementary school capacity. The challenge that you all saw in the zoning exercise that we did is that we get very tight at our middle school numbers, and it is really hard to balance our middle school numbers. The question that I don't have an answer for, and I don't have a recommendation for is, when is the time to address our middle school capacity? Because there's a predictive factor in there. When you see what we have done with transfers, we have dramatically cut the numbers of transfers. And so based on roll-up next year at Houston Middle School, we actually have 10 students, or a couple of students less than where we currently are right now. But that doesn't take into effect, into account, the growth factor. So that's where we become real nebulous of where are we with the growth. Mr. Blaine, can you throw up your?
I think from my perspective, while it might not be something we prioritize in 2018, we begin the conversation with the FAC because in order to plan it, they're gonna have to plan further out for that amount, the amount of money that we're gonna be looking at for addition. So if we begin that conversation and say, this is a coming need, not this year, but the year after, or the year after, where we're going to be.
The only thing I would say to that, and Ms. Randy.
Houston Middle.
Yeah. Refresh me, because you had a very good description, I can't, I just can't remember it, about the timing of if you did an addition to Middle, Houston Middle, how long that would take? And I mean, I just can't remember.
I think if we're looking at something like we saw at Riverdale, we're talking about a 12-month build process. Now, you've gotta back up from that, so Mr. Kathy can speak about this. You've got three months of going through the commissions for approval.
Right.
So you gotta go through planning, DRC, BZA, so that's three months. But as far as the bid process, we're probably, you know, four months for the construction documents, the bid.
Well, that comes first before you go start going through the commission. So I would say for an addition of that size, three months to four months is a fair timeline to actually put it all together before you start heading through the commissions for approval.
So about a year and a half-ish from start to finish?
I believe so, I think that's a fair. That's what, Mr. Kathy, would you agree with that?
Yes, sir.
A year and a half to get through. So I think.
And would it be fair to say that it might be too much to do a middle school addition and building a new school at the same time?
I would definitely agree that.
No, I mean, I think that's fair, I mean, I think when you're prioritizing these things, you also have to think about what you can take.
Currently, and what currently is on.
Yeah, what you can take from the water hose, and how much you can take from it.
But if you look, if you look just at the numbers, it looks like you're, we do have two years in the, where on paper, the numbers are lower. And you could use those two years to build your addition in anticipation.
Of '23.
Of '22, '23.
The only thing I would say.
But what about '20?
Yeah, the only thing I would say.
I mean, we would have to start immediately to get.
Well, no, if you could do, you could do '20, because in theory, if you could do this, you would, you would be finishing the new building and starting the build, the addition, and so that it would open in 2020. Where I'm going with this is to get ahead, to be proactive, to really think through the fact that we are over-optimal capacity right now at Houston Middle. And we look at those numbers, we will continue to be over-optimal.
Yes.
We are using classrooms that were hopefully to be science rooms. We also have, looking at Riverdale, and I think if we could say that we're committed and that it's a priority to do this addition, I think it could help us in what we decide to do with our attendance zones. Because we just spent a lot of money on an addition at Riverdale, and making it work by being able to push sixth grade into the elementary school or.
Take their STEM lab and use a class in there.
It just, that's not why we built that facility. That's not what we are as a district, and that's not what our new elementary school's gonna be. And so I think that if we could get ahead of this and start, to your point, talking with them and saying, we, we will be building, we need to build by this day, which means we would need money at this point, so that it's not two to three years around. That's right, that's exactly right. And say, this is what we've had, type of priority. I also think it would give a lot of comfort to the community to know that that's where we're going, and that's the next step. And to your point, I think that's where the questions are coming, is should we go K-8? Because they, we don't, we haven't really, don't have a definitive plan for that. And I also think that could help us in our zoning attendance meetings. So, you know, I just wanna throw that out there, that when I'm, I agree with you. It probably isn't a need where we have to have money in the bank for 2018, but we might be getting close to that, because if you're thinking 2020, when would you start that? End, the end of 2018?
So I think we would go, like you said, straight from opening the new elementary school to turn around, okay, we'd start planning the addition.
Well, but I think what Ms. Landers just said is that we put it on here to begin discussing with them this year, that this is a coming up need.
Right, in my, my discussion, which we were all invited to take part in with Alderman Gibson, that is something that she, in our discussion, encouraged that we go ahead and begin the conversation and set up the scenario that this is coming. This is not a, you know, the numbers are there, we know it's going to hit. And so basically giving them a year to plan for the requests that we will make, and having the information that it was going to take a year and a half to two years by the time we start the process to the time we can open it. And with the idea that we're going to be able to open a new addition in 2020.
I think that's, that would be great.
That is a good, that's a great plan.
Because again, you're communicating to, when we are communicating to the Alderman and also to our community, we know it's a problem, we're doing our best to address it as purposefully as possible.
Right.
I would ask, does that mean we're looking at portables?
I don't believe so, but we'll clarify. I think that's something that we're going to have to manage, that's why we're tracking this so closely. And that's why we have tried to take proactive steps with the number of transfers. So we think by dramatically cutting it like this, that it should provide, we may not need.
Now, what if we see.
Even based on attendant zoning, if we wanna keep Riverdale.
Yes, yeah, no, that, yes, so there are zones that could pose some problems. But we were just looking at resident numbers, remember, when we were doing that zoning exercise? So yeah, that could create some.
So just, that's something we just have to.
Yeah, that we're gonna have to.
As we go through the zoning.
As we go through it. I do wanna clarify, too, we've talked about that, why not the K-8 at the new elementary school? I know I've told you this before, but I try to say it every single time. In all the projections, we're looking at about 230 kids, additional middle school students. It is really difficult to run a K-8 model, and Riverdale has 450 sixth-through-eight students. And to offer the same programs that we have, the STEM classes, the foreign language classes, it's really hard to staff a K-8 school that is that small with the middle school population. So academically, Dr. Park can share on this, too. It would not be our recommendation because of academics that we would run a K-8 school with only 200, 230 middle school students in it. So that's why we always say, that's why the new elementary school's not designed to be a K-8.
Costs us a fortune in personnel.
That's why.
Yes.
Well, and just the quality, I mean, I think you talked about that model and, you know, maybe that not being our go-to.
And we have that option in our community, and it's very valuable for people. And I think we give people choices with the inter-district transfers.
Right, right. Okay.
So I think that's the first charge we will include with the superintendent for the FAC is to, in his presentation, to begin that dialogue at our presentation in later in March about the addition to the middle school. Because that's part of our discussion today, after we prioritize and we look at it, is our FAC presentation. And what we're gonna ask the superintendent to clarify with the FAC.
I wanna clarify, so when I do this, because I wanna do timelines, and I wanna show as this project's coming offline, we're getting ready to start this project. So as I do my presentation, if I'm hearing the board correctly, 2019, 2020, is that the architect's commission's planning year? Or is that the money in hand year of building construction? That's what I wanna clarify.
I think we said we wanted it to be open 2020.
I don't think that's possible.
I don't think it's possible, yeah, and I did say that, but I don't.
Well, but can we make it possible? I'm just gonna go, I'm just gonna throw this out there.
Not unless, not unless we're, we've got the funding already secured from the board right now. It took us three years to open Riverdale, and we started that in '14, and we opened it in '17.
You're absolutely. You're absolutely correct, but I, I guess where I'm going with this is that we had, we were having this discussion last year with the city. Is that correct? I mean, we told them that it was coming.
Yes, we did.
We told them that we needed a middle school addition. And I think one of the things that, if you just look at straight numbers, if you just look at a number on a piece of paper, you might go, oh, you don't really need an addition. What they're not under, what I don't think people understand is that we're over optimal capacity. We as a district want to use STEM labs and science labs as such, not as classrooms. We want our kids to have enough gym space to be able to have effective gym classes and other activities. And so, that, the one school, when this is all said and done, that doesn't have that is Houston Middle. And when you look at the amount of money that we've spent on Houston Middle since we've been a district, very minimal. Whereas, all of our other schools have really been touched and have really had the upgrades. And I just feel like to wait to two or three more years, when we're already at capacity, in my view, as over optimal. Might not be at the max, and I understand that, but I think if, we are not operating Houston Middle as a optimal capacity and giving everybody what they have. So I would say that if that's the case, that we would start building, in theory, breaking ground in July.
I think we've got to give the city a minimum of a year notice.
We talked to them last year about it.
But they just ponied up twenty-seven million dollars for a new elementary school.
And, and I hear that, but that, this is welcome to not getting...
The three schools.
The three schools. I mean, this is, as soon as that, that decision was made, that we did not get an elementary school and a middle school, a capital, a capital note was set at that point. And I'm just saying, we should ask, I don't, there's money and they, they have prioritization that they have to do, and I feel like we as a board should ask for the money. If they had, if they come back and say they don't have it...
But we just agreed that we're going to ask for the money.
Well, no, you, you said you were gonna mention to them that we were going to need the money...
We, we, we're gonna need the money in twenty nineteen, twenty, to begin the architect's work.
We don't even know how much money.
To begin the building twenty-twenty.
Well, I think...
Yeah, we don't have a clue.
Well, we didn't have a clue, and we were doing an elementary school either. We still don't even have a good estimate, yet we gave them twenty-seven million dollars because it was based on Riverdale, so I would...
And I will clarify, though, they gave the twenty-seven million.
Thank you very much.
Based on their debt, their debt capacity.
That's exactly right.
I didn't say, hey, give me twenty-seven million.
We wanted, we wanted... Well, and, and so there was no estimate, there was no design. It was, to your point, a money that was given to us and we're building within that, and we still will be building within that amount. And what we just talked about here was that we would be opening it twenty-twenty. I really do feel strongly that our district, twenty-twenty, how many years is that, that we've been squeezing into Houston Middle?
Six.
Lisa.
I, I hear what you're saying, and I hear your frustration, but we can't keep going to our funding source with our hand down. We have to do this very strategically.
Yes.
We, we helped, we helped fund the Riverdale addition with millions of dollars. They ponied up some, we ponied up more. We did not help to this, but we're gonna have to.
We will be helping with any middle school, is that fair?
New elementary school, yeah.
The elementary school.
Sorry.
And, you know, this, as you well know, getting funds out of government is, is hard. It's gonna be very hard. They have a debt capacity, they're not going to lose their triple-A bond rating. They are not gonna jeopardize that. I mean, that's the one thing they're gonna, they are not gonna do.
And please, I, I hear what you're saying, I really do. But I think, we're in a position as a growing district, and, and everybody says...
I know, I know.
The reason Germantown is booming is because of the schools.
And it always has.
Houses are falling up, but even more so, I would think, since we've got our, our district. I think, I think we should not answer for them.
But we cannot, we cannot just keep pounding them and pounding them and pounding. I understand, I understand your frustration, I do. But we just, we just can't, they're going to raise taxes, they already have, they're going to do it again. And I, you know, some people have a real problem with that. I know, I know, you may not...
No, I don't disagree, I mean, I, I, I feel that pain, but at the same time, we are not the funding body.
I understand that.
And we should not make decisions for them. We, as a school board, should decide what we think is best in our interest for our district, and we should go ask for that.
And we should fight for it, but don't be afraid, or don't be disappointed when you don't get it.
And I don't disagree, but I think that's, it's, we should be in agree to disagree for them to say, for us to do this, school board, it would take X, Y, and Z, and we don't feel like we should put that onto our community, so we're gonna push you back a year.
Right.
But I don't think that we should anticipate their answer.
All I'm saying is, you have to, we, as a board, because we know this needs to be done, we have to do the convincing, the positioning, and we have to be strategic about what we're doing. In order to get twenty-seven million dollars, a lot of things were put on the back burner to help us out with a new elementary school. The fire stations, the police department, a lot of things that this city relies on. Every bit as much as, or more than they do their schools was put on the back burner. So approaching it from a realistic standpoint, we need to strongly begin the conversation. But is this your top priority item?
This is my, I, well, let me take that back. School safety is my number one top priority.
Because from the grand scheme of things, an immediate ask, from the, the school safety standpoint, would probably be the easiest thing for us to get with immediacy.
Oh, I don't disagree, I mean, and I think that's, but, but...
But I, okay, I, I'm gonna put out there, what I feel is the top priority for us to discuss, is the fact that we need to replace the boiler system at Riverdale. Because we are continuing to pour money into fixing it year after year after year. And it's not gonna get any less expensive for us to redo. And it's gonna continue to have problems, and we're gonna continue to...
I think that's fair.
And so, I want us to look at other things on this list besides, I mean, the middle school, we're all in agreement. We're all in agreement.
But I think we're not in agreement on the timing of what we would ask for.
I...
Matt?
Yeah, go ahead, Amy, please.
I, I realize that the city's priorities, they have fire to look at and police, and they have to provide all garbage pickup, and all the kinds of things that they have going on. And that is their world, that is what they have to do. Our world is the school. And if we are not the ones to point out our needs and to say, look, guys, we are wall to wall in this, in Houston Middle and Riverdale right now. We're not using the beautiful STEM lab the way it was designed. We're not using the art room the way it was designed. We're, I mean, we're packing...
Well, no, they're packing two classes at the same time.
That's not the way it was designed to be used. So, you know, they don't know, they don't know that unless we're effectively communicating that to them, and we, that, we are advocates for our community in this. Now, absolutely, they can say, you know what, we hear you, but we can't do this till next year. And I respect that, but I want them to have, I want us to understand that our role is to make sure that they know we have this need, and it is immediate.
I think we, I, I believe that's, that's where we are. I know in my discussion with Alderman Gibson, and she was very receptive, I know Ms. Fisher had a discussion with her as well, I don't know who else has, that was one of my top asks. And I am just sharing with you what she shared with me, is that you need a year's notice.
Okay.
So, last year, we began the discussion, now we upped the ante. This is now more immediate than it was a year ago. This is not just a, oh, we think we're going to need in sometime in the future. This is, we absolutely need this.
Well, and, and I think that's very fair, and I think as we come down our list, it's gonna be very long. I think there are quite a few things that we have as priorities. But what I would also say is just to go back to that, is that that's one Alderman that we spoke to, and I think that it's fair for our district and for us to be advocates, that we put everything out there that we feel like we need next year. And don't anticipate that they're gonna tell us no. Put it out there on the list, not as a side note, and say, this is what, if, if it was a perfect world, this is what we would love for you to fund for us, knowing you might not be able to, but tell us how much you can. And to your point, Mr. Manuel, we'll go back and retrofit it. You give us this amount of money, we'll go figure out from there what we...
From our list.
From our list, what we feel like we need to do.
Ms. Fisher, you have it spoken, would you like to...
Well, no, I think we should, what we should be doing is, is giving these priorities.
So...
Ms. Fit, and Ms. Parker?
We've already gone out for the Farmington H V A C replacement.
Yeah, so that's why... That's done.
We don't need to...
We don't need to do that.
For us, when we, when we did this document right here, I don't think the point of this conversation is to talk about the orange items.
Okay.
Because we've already gone through the process, those don't have the impact on...
And as far as the Houston High Field House, that's a private...
That's a private funding thing.
Funding thing, we really don't need to talk about that one either.
Well, we will need to talk about it because part of the private funding...
Yes.
Is a request that we, as a district, contribute to it.
So, I do think this is part of, and this is part of the discussion that we need to have today. So, based on a private donor, they want to give, at this time, and the amounts may change in percentages, but at this time, the request that's been made is for, they will give us, the district, seven hundred thousand dollars for field house improvements, three hundred thousand dollars, and if you looked at it, it said fine arts, programming. So, the caveat, though, was it had to have a match, it was a match, matching request of equal amounts from the city and from the district. And it's, they want to do it over a five-year period. So what they want is, that would put us in at two hundred thousand dollars a year for five years for this process, but you would have to have the same funding for the city for, to receive that funding. If you didn't do that, then you would be forfeiting that.
So that's a million dollars for five years?
Yes, a million dollars for a funding.
And what it's giving is about nine hundred thousand to fine arts, if everybody goes all in, the funder, the city, and the state.
It's two point one for the field house.
Aren't we binding future boards?
No, because it's, well, for the five year, you could be.
Yeah, there's many for each of you, there's no two of us.
But it's the same thing, in that mindset, though, it's the same thing that we did for the, well, no, turf was a one-time payment.
But for other, that were other...
Other projects, so the example would be our debt payment that we have to the city, that M O U to pay for Riverdale's addition. So we, we agree that we would be in for that, so you can bind...
Is the city doing it? Do we know it?
No.
We haven't heard.
This conversation's not...
This is just the district's conversation, whether or not we're willing to do it.
So it's just to be part of our priority list?
The discussion today is, I think, important to say, that'll be another thing that needs to be discussed.
And I think if, if we make, if we decide that this is something we want to do, it does put a little more heat on the city that, okay, yes, we have this million dollar donor, we're willing to go in for five years for two hundred thousand dollars, and then we look to the city. And it, and then it's on them as to whether that million dollars gets left on the table or not.
And so, on this list...
Wait a minute, wait a minute, I thought this was a, yes, oh...
You had your hand in it.
I'm sorry, I thought this was a fundraiser. They only have one donor.
So, I'll clarify, it was presented to this board, and I think Ms. Fisher did a good job of saying, at this time, when we're making this priority, it was, it was not for the district funding. And they have done a lot of work outside of this one donor. So I know that, just on the base they have right now, they have commitment for four hundred thousand dollars, from what I've been told above it.
That you got it in writing?
No, I do not have that in writing yet. But they do, they have said that they have four hundred thousand of other fundraising that they have done. I think, in talking to the people organizing this, they feel like if the city and school district come onto this project, and they know that they have this, this large donor who's put this caveat on there, they feel like their fundraising efforts, efforts will be even greater because they'll see that the synergy of everybody going into the project.
Is there enough money, or do you think there'll be enough money to build the size of project, or can we downsize it?
So, my request for the project was to design it so that, of course, we have the big scope and sequence of what would they want for this project and their desires for this project, but to design it so that it could be scalable, and you could build it in projects and add things on. And so myself was actually on that.
I am on that committee.
Ms. So, did you want to add anything, because you are on, you represent the board on that committee?
Um, I am, I am impressed with the people who are working on this. I mean, I think they are engaged and they are committed to making this happen. I, I agree with Mr. Manuel that we need to design the entire project initially, but with the idea that if, if for some reason, reason, the funding comes in sections, then we build one area and then maybe do the concessions later.
Well, obviously, they're gonna come in sections, because we're only giving two hundred thousand dollars.
Well, I mean, it's, it's how they, how it all works out.
That's right.
They, they're...
I'm, I think it's be, above and beyond that. So if the board was going to decide that they want to be in this project, and the city came in and matched, then what you'd do is you'd either get a loan from the city or the Houston Athletic and Arts Foundation would have to go out and get a loan for this to pay for that amount of funding. Now...
Refresh my memory, how much have we put toward the field?
Hundred and twenty-five.
One twenty-five, and that was a one-time.
That was total.
Yeah.
And that was total at one time.
And my question, too, just to go back to, if they're taking a loan out in the end, if there's, if anything's defaulted, who comes back and has to pay it?
It would have, it would, you would have that promissory...
I mean, it's gonna be on our property.
You could craft promissory notes that put it on the people who have signed the promissory notes.
Which is similar to what the turf has done.
But we would have to make sure that our legal counsel, yes, similar to what the turf did.
Because that's my concern.
Does craft, I think the difference here that makes it a little bit different than the turf was the amount of money that we're talking about.
Yeah.
And also that it is a building.
It is a building. I mean, that's, you know, I don't want us to, I don't want us to be responsible for the money.
You have a big chunk of it secured by the district and the city. Right? I mean, so I think, you know, which gives, I think, more weight to the loan.
And I think, the district agreed, the donor agreed, the city agreed, the fundraising body is still a long way from hitting their numbers. And that's got to happen before anything else, before ground is broken and, and anything begins. The donor and the district both are looking at two hundred thousand dollars a year, though the donor has said to the superintendent tonight that, that would probably happen sooner, the completion of, of the donation.
It is coming sooner.
Um, than over five years. So, Ms. Fisher?
I guess, yeah, my only concern is that, I'm not against a football facility, but here we are again, and, and I realize it's the football entity that's initiated it, but, you know, again, we're not focusing on putting some funds into the fine arts. And I, and I think, you know, the only caveat of making me think, giving me any less pause...
Make it more palatable.
Less pause to proceed, is that there will be funds for fine arts. I would really like to see, and I don't know if that'll happen, I'd like to see the division change. I'd like to see it more fifty-fifty to fine arts and fifty to...
Which would be my preference as...
That's really what I would like to see, because then we would be assured a lot more funds for fine arts. And that way, we could actually do something that shows some results.
But right now, this is...
I mean, I, I would say that when you're looking at the community that's stepping up to fund this project or fund a project, it is, it is the athletic community, and this is coming from a, I mean, I'm an arts person. And, and the 900,000 from, from that, when we're looking at the band replacement space, I, when we were kind of crunching the numbers, Mr. Manuel and I were kind of crunching the numbers, what would this cost or look like potentially? There will likely be arts money left over that can be rolled into an auditorium project to kickstart parents that are ready to start a project to let's, let's renovate an auditorium, because I think that hopefully will be the next big push, because it's in desperate need of renovation.
And it affects a lot of students.
And it affects a lot of students. I mean, well, and, and teachers, and, I mean, look, they use it for PD and other things, so.
When you look at the people, it affects football versus.
Well, and, and the other athletic, one of the questions I asked during the meeting, because I have similar concerns that we're impacting, how many kids are we impacting? The weight room will be accessible to, to all sports, and one of the things we discussed was female sports and male sports, and making sure they have facilities in there for females when they're using the weight room. So it is not a one-sport-use building. It is a multi-sport building.
Well, and I think that part of this could also be, if you think about it, and again, how you, how you discuss it, is, to go ahead to your point, Linda, and get that announcement out, that part of this donation from this donor, and part of the money will be put towards arts. So if, if we'd like to go ahead and start getting a group together and get, that starts saying, we'd like to start talking auditorium, we'd like to start, tell that, let's get those parents going. I mean, let's, let's get that group started, because it doesn't, it takes time to get people organized and to start thinking about it, but knowing that there's going to be some money accessible that could be a start to fundraising that, go ahead.
No, I, I do believe that the theater booster and some of the other booster parents, art booster parents are pretty strong right now, the president and vice president, and they would be great people to tap into, so.
Yes, I mean, I, I think just getting that, with this could come, getting that kickstarted, I guess, is what, what I would see as a benefit, is that it's not just a focus on athletics. That would be the first project that would be completed. So when you're looking at that, how you push it and prioritize it and get the parents involved.
But right now.
So, yes.
We need to focus on what we're going to prioritize as far as capital improvements for the coming year. Ms. Parker?
Okay, the second one on the list, I want Dogwood ADA upgrades. It's been pushed every year. And it's changed from 600.
Can we go back to one?
One is the boiler.
Is everybody in agreement that, is everybody all in that the boiler is their first priority, or not?
Well, school safety isn't on this list, so I would say school safety would be number one.
I think, I think we're on agreement that safety, once they come back with a plan. I, I mean, I don't even know if we can take some out of reserve to cover safety, because I feel that's a priority, or if we, we ask the city, that's something that the city could help us with.
And that'll be my request, is if the city doesn't fund it, then we, we can do this out of the reserve.
So this is, so school safety is not something we would take to the FAC on our list?
I think that you could, because I think that in the current political climate, this is something that everyone sees as being a need for our students, for our families.
And so then I think visually and for talking purposes, school safety would be number one. We don't have a placeholder for that amount, but I would recommend that we say school safety is our number-one priority.
No, I mean, I think no matter what, we do it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, absolutely.
What were you going to say, Mr. Parker?
I was just going to say, as far as, I just wanted to make sure that the board was aware that there's not money in the current budget to do the Riverdale boiler-chiller system upgrade project, not even close to that. So if the board decides they have an appetite for that, that will also require pulling from reserves to, to complete that project, so, and in order for us to accomplish it this summer, that's, that's, we, we just need direction on it.
Quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
The, the funding of the Farmington HVAC, you have the funds in your budget for?
Yes, ma'am, that's in the current capital budget.
And after that, you don't have, I guess, how much?
He does, so.
How much do you have left, just to give us an idea? Plus, hopefully, we're getting some money from Shelby County Schools.
The projects that we have prepared bid package for, there's a committee at Houston High School right now that's been meeting to prepare for interior next year painting at that school. We were, we were planning to put the bid out for Farmington ceiling tile grid since that got pushed. Those are the only two that we've actually been preparing for.
Okay.
And then, then after that, that, those were it, so.
Two things. One, we have reserves, correct, Superintendent?
Correct.
11, 12, something like that, 13?
I would say close to 12.
I hear Mr. Kathy saying yesterday is when we needed to place this order and get these bids going. Would it be fair to say, and I'm, I'm asking this as a question, not as a wish, is, what if we said in this meeting today, this is number-one priority, even if the city doesn't fund it, we need to go ahead and pay for it, go ahead and get started?
I would.
And then we would, and if we, we come up short, we would have enough in reserves to cover it?
I would be very hesitant of that.
Okay.
And the reason I say that is, it is a number-one priority for us, but we haven't gone to bid for the new elementary school.
Good point.
And so, and I think that when everyone talks about, and we've had this conversation, so I'm going to repeat just because it's public record. For the school district to run, when we opened as a district, remember, we had to borrow $8 million from the city, that pays the bills, because we get funded through our, you know, people pay their property taxes, which is December, February. So we have a cash flow, a cash flow issue. So we always need to keep seven, eight million that's, that's in our bank account to pay our bills going from July all the way through.
Up to January 10th.
Up to January 10th. So that's our cash flow issue.
Okay.
So what I would like to say, so when we have $12 million, let's go ahead and take seven, and I'm going to say, that's not a conservative number if I say seven, but we'll take seven off, off the mix. So then what we're talking about is, you're talking, was that five million?
Well, and we have a million that we just said that we would do for the district.
Yes, so, so you take five, so that's, that's six, four, so that gets us to four.
Another three for the new school.
So then, depending on that new school, there's, there's three, then there's.
That's a good point. That's very valid.
So.
There's surely not a lot of wiggle.
So you're basically, we're basically prioritizing what we're going to ask the FAC for.
And I guess what I would say to that is, given the timing, we asked the FAC, that's not a definitive approval, because it goes to them, and then it's not, really not approved until it goes to the BMA, and I can't remember the date of that meeting, but I think it's probably in May when they approve their CIP. Is that be fair?
Yes.
Is that too late? I guess what I'm asking is, if we have to do it in the summer, if we don't find out until mid-May, can we even feasibly take care of it and do it?
No.
No.
So then is it just off the table? And, and that's where I was kind of going, I mean, I'm hearing him saying, you got to have, I mean, you have time. I mean, it takes time, and we won't know until.
The problem is, we either commit that we're going to do it, and if we get the money, we can, it may not be a project that starts in the following year, but we have the money to start for the following year.
So that could be an alternate approach. We can go ahead and replace the air handlers that are in the classrooms. There's a cost, the reason, you guys know the reason we have started looking at this, because of the incident that happened over Christmas, but an alternate approach could be, go ahead and replace the 15 air handlers that are in the classrooms. We think there's about a $300,000 price tag associated with that. We are going to get insurance money for that, and put this on the capital plan and begin advocating for the funding of it moving forward. It's not like we could never do the project, we were just trying to capitalize on the dollars that were coming in.
Well, no, so that makes sense. And so what, basically what you're saying is that we would still put it on the 2018 plan, but we would have the money set aside so that we would do this next year. So it's really not a tight timeframe. Okay, then that's fair. Okay, I was thinking that if we, that it was either do it or spend a lot more money to do something different.
It's spend $300,000 on air handler units and then look to do it in the future. Our worry is the operations department, was we spend the $300,000 or $350,000, whatever ends up being on the 15 air handler units, and then the boiler goes out next year, and now we're looking at replacing a boiler that's originally building from 1968, and now we're pouring more money into a system that's not really, that we all agree is not a system that we.
Sure, sure. None of this is easy. Ms. Parker?
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Get us back on track. So one is, one is safety.
Well, we're going to do safety whether or not.
Well, but we're going to put it to town.
One, or two is the boiler, three is Dogwood ADA upgrades. Two, three, four is Houston High painting. Five is the Farmington ceiling tile. And then, just go down the list. Six, LED lighting, seven, Houston High boiler, eight, continued lease payments and acquisition install.
But I'll clear, I think this is something that we could remove, based on our roll-up and our projections, the acquisition and install of additional modular classrooms.
Yeah, that makes sense.
We don't see, that is something, there are no numbers, no predictions that we see at, at the schools that would require that, because you would be talking about a $300,000 cost for one, one year. So that is not something that any of our administration or student services.
And let's talk about the athletic complex.
Well.
That needs, that's just a miss.
It's the same thing as the.
It's the same thing.
Yeah.
Is it not?
Yes. Uh, which one?
You have the athletic.
No, the athletic complex.
Is that the new gym?
That was the gym originally when we were looking, and this was a hard, I'll say it was a personal decision for me to sacrifice, it had an impact on my family. But we know that at the high school, for example, they don't have enough gym space, so they have groups that are practicing, two groups in the same space that cheer, and the wrestlers are all practicing in the same space. Our basketball teams are practicing at Grace of Anne and off-campus, and so originally, I don't know if you remember, with the Riverdale project, we were looking at additional gym space, and we were looking at Riverdale. But in the conversations with Riverdale, we realized the impact that additional gym space has on the program. And so, I'll say it was personal, because my son could have benefited from a wrestling room at the high school. But we put this complex on hold, realizing that the gym at Riverdale was the most important priority. So not only did they get the classrooms that replaced the modulars behind, they also got gym space, too. So this is that complex that was needed, and is still needed at the high school campus, and we do have plans for it at the high school campus.
A question about just the way things flow. So we, there's money that we get, that we do maintenance and other things of that nature. And I know that you had mentioned some things about different payments coming in and rolling off. When you look at some of these items, or any items, is there money that we would have available that would be aside from asking the city for money?
So the answer to your question is yes, but some of those, Mr. Kathy, is already accounted for. So what he, what he tries to do is, he tries to look at the county commission funding that we have, and so out of his general fund budget, we have approximately $800,000 in maintenance, and so we can't look at that.
Sure, sure.
That's fixing stuff. But he does have a million dollars that's out of the general fund, approximately in capital improvements. And so when you see the smaller projects that happen, like the libraries, like the gym floors, those are out of that budget, and a lot of times, that capital budget gets used for maintenance, fixing things versus just an upgrade. But what he tries to do with the county commission money, so that's outside the general fund, so really think, $800,000 maintenance, a million he's using for capital improvements, he's also getting funding from the county commission, and that comes in fiscal years. So it's about, Mr. Kathy?
It's, it's just under a million. It was 930-some, 930-some odd thousand this year, and that's allocated over next year as well. So that, that has to be used specifically for what the county defines as a capital project. Painting does not, library carpet replacements do not, so we have to use it for a project that's defined as a capital.
And a 10-year lifespan, I think, on the project. But what Mr. Kathy does a lot of times to get these big projects off this list, is he combines fiscal years. So if a project is starting in, in June, and we have that 9:30 coming from county commission, he'll start that project with that and then complete that project with the additional 9:30 that's coming for that, that next year. So when he's looking at the projects that were on this list, I think you'd already penciled in your head how to use the Shelby County money, what are you looking at as far?
So we've already allocated the Shelby, the, the Farmington HVAC replacement that the board approved, we've already allocated that $600,000 Shelby County Commission money toward doing that project.
And that was fiscal money for last year's, or the, or is that both upcoming to?
That's the fiscal money that we got dropped at the bank account this fiscal year, correct?
So there's another.
Carryover from.
300,000 will be carried over?
300,000 will be carried over, or will be allocated to one of the other projects that we have there, yes, ma'am.
And that will be based on the priorities that we set that may, may remain unfunded by the city?
That's correct. So that, so we took that additional funding.
Yeah, okay, okay.
And Ms. Lenders, you can put future addition to HMS either before your safety of schools, or you can add it to the bottom, but just to talk on the priority list.
And just to clarify, continued lease payments, Mr. Kathy, you're paying that out of your current capital budget that you have?
That comes out of the general fund capital budget, yes, sir.
So that is not on the, required on the CIP list?
Right.
When it comes out of capital improvement, dollars out of the general fund. So it does, it eats out, it eats.
It is.
It eats about a fifth of the capital.
Right, it comes out, but as far as if we're looking for securing funding for this, you've already budgeted and planned for.
I budgeted in the general fund for those lease payments.
So basically, it drops his capital to 800,000 in the fiscal rate.
That's correct.
So the way I have my priority list is, number one, safety at schools, number two, the Riverdale boiler-chiller, number three, Dogwood ADA updates, four, Houston High painting, five, Farmington ceiling tile, six, LED lighting at all schools, seven, Houston High boiler replacement, and eight, future addition to Houston Middle School.
And just, we did not add in there field house.
Oh, okay.
I mean, just, because there was discussion about that.
Right.
And there'll be some funding needed.
I'd like to find out if the board is willing to do it, if they are.
Our board or their board?
Their board.
Yeah.
Things are chicken, chicken or the egg. I think we have to, I think they're looking, it's, fingers are going like this. I think.
Everybody is looking to us, to the district's commitment at the moment, but.
So then, all of us go, so go priority?
Let's take one thing at a time. Is everyone comfortable with the priority list? Is the same match is mine? Is everybody comfortable with the priority list? If not.
I would say yes to school safety. I would say after that would be the boiler, Riverdale boiler, that's mine. And then I would say Houston Middle addition, ensuring that we could push to get. Then I would say painting of Houston High. Is there a reason that we're singling out Farmington for the ceiling tile grid? Is every school bad, or is it just?
Because they were painted.
They were painted.
And they wanted to.
Every school's bad, but it was the first one on the list, because it makes sense you would do the painting and then do the ceiling grid and tile.
And every school is on the list for ceiling tile and grid, but the idea is, once you paint, it looks really aesthetically painful, and Mr. Pierce has some, some interest in recabling some of the above-ceiling things that would give our coat inspector a heart attack if they got there and started looking at what's above ceiling.
And would that be lighting as well, or just the ceiling tile?
That would be ceiling tile and grid, and the lighting is on the list as well.
But for all schools, right?
Riverdale's the exception. Riverdale has the, that price includes the LED upgrade.
Right. Riverdale will get it all done at once.
If I'm not mistaken.
Yeah.
Yes.
Right, that, that would all be taken care of, but this, but the, but the Farmington ceiling tile is just Farmington, but the lighting and upgrade at all schools is all schools.
That's correct.
Except for Riverdale.
Right. I would then say, this is just me, I would then say.
All right, what I'm going to ask you to do, because we can't vote, so everybody write in your priority list, and we will go from there.
And I'm still unsure on the timeline for Houston Middle School.
As far as what, the addition, what we're telling them, I'm sorry.
I think, I think, I don't think we have a consensus as a board, so I think that would be, I would say 2020, but I, because I think we need to ask, and then.
That's, that, so that, just know that that's, I'm not hearing, I'm not hearing consensus on the timeline.
I think where, where, I, I know that we're going to begin, we mentioned it last year, I think we have to more, get a, more stringent in our conversation about the, we need to start after we complete the elementary school, the need to start with the architects, and then break ground for the new middle school addition. So if you want to back that up, we're going to open the new middle school in, in 1920? Yes?
2020. So let me ask you.
No, we're, no, elementary school.
Yeah, 20.
Elementary opens, yeah.
2019.
2019, yeah.
So if you're going to do it like that, then.
You're saying planning, planning here, building here, open doors here?
When we needed the worst, yes.
Well, I, I don't, I don't agree that we needed the worst there. I think the worst is now. I mean, I think we're.
But we can't open it.
You've got to allow a year and a half.
No, I understand that, but that's more than a year and a half in tears. I agree a year and a half.
But you did, did you not say, could we do it immediately following opening the new school?
I was saying that we would break ground opening the school. So what I was envisioning was during 2019, the spring of 2019, starting the architect plans, getting that ready, so that as the new school is up. I'm sorry, 2018. No, where am I? 2019, no, 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 no.
What Ms. Jones is saying is, right here.
While we're in the middle of building the elementary school.
Well, that's, and that's what I want to ask. I mean, can you do a plan and architect fees while you're building?
Can you be trade halls? You and Mr. Law?
You almost did it with Riverdale, right, and the new elementary school?
What's that?
I'm just saying.
I don't.
You probably wanted that, yeah. I, I don't know, I'm just asking you, Superintendent, is if you, if you were.
That's, for me, if the money just appeared, I would still be concerned about their ability to complete both projects at the same time, because that is all boots on the ground, where they're having weekly meetings at the elementary school or at the middle school, whatever the side is, and they're looking at the plans and stuff, so that's, that's the challenge.
And we're also building the administration building simultaneously.
And possibly a field house.
And possibly a field house.
I just, I don't think that.
So what are we doing to relieve the classrooms at Houston Middle? And does that need to be included in this?
As a priority.
As a priority. We can't, we can't just keep packing kids in.
No, but time is not our friend on this. That's, that's the problem. Even if we got the. Even if we got the four million dollars tomorrow, we're still going to be building a new middle, a new elementary school.
I'm not arguing that, I'm saying, then, we need to have a discussion about what we're going to do to relieve the stress on our teachers and on our students and on our families now. So, are we talking about portables in the next year?
I don't, I don't believe, and that's a question I can't, that's a question I can't answer, but-
Are you gonna be coming back to us and saying we're gonna need-
The question I would say to you is, is possibly. Um, this all depends on the growth.
Right, right.
It's all about, it's all about the growth.
Well, but this is, uh, the only thing I would say to that, and I, is if, I think even if we don't have any growth, just looking at where we are today, we are stretched.
Yes.
Um, and-
We are tight.
We are very tight. Tight at the Riverdale, tight at Houston Middle. So, even if everything stays the same, I don't know that that's excellence. And so, my question would be, what are our options if we don't feel like we're gonna be able to build until twenty twenty-one? Is it even feasible to put portables out there that, because I think what I've heard from you is it's gym space, it's cafeteria space, it's those multipurpose spaces. So, I would just say that, just thinking about that is, is there an option? I don't know that we have to solve that in this meeting today, but just, what would an option be?
And I think that comes for me, the discussion on what we have to do with our non-residents and with our zoning policy. When we look at the granting of exit years, there's another area of relief that we haven't talked about.
That we haven't turned that speaking on?
We haven't, we haven't looked at, we haven't looked at the non-residents that are in our seats right now, and that's a hard discussion to have as far as, um, what's happening.
That's very fair.
So, know that that's, there's another, um, way that we can get some relief.
Okay.
So, Houston Middle is consideration on the list, the Field House is not. It's a separate discussion.
Do you want my list?
Yes, please, the superintendent and I, the executive committee will take this list and see where we play out.
So, leave Houston Middle and the Field House as separate items, not prioritize them here?
I think-
That's okay with me, I just wanna make sure, is that what you want us to do?
That's what I, yes. Unless you put it, um, as Ms. Parker did, the very last on the list. But yes, that's, the, the middle school is some, is a, is a different conversation, because I think we're, we're trying to craft a message for the superintendent to deliver to the FAC, and time is not our friend. Where this is concerned.
All of these are incredible projects, they're all neat.
But staff can only handle some, I mean, you guys, you guys do an amazing job, but staff can only handle so much.
And I think we need to be concerned about our, our finances. We need to be responsible here, and we're building a new elementary school that we still, at this point, don't know how much we may have to take out of reserves.
That's correct.
Right. So, we've got two building projects for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, as it stands now. So... The soonest we could really look at, realistically, look at involving an architect, breaking ground would be the nineteen, twenty school year with completion.
In twenty-one?
In twenty-one. Is that realistic?
Maybe.
It's, you know, really, looking at all the schools across the county, this is not, this is a nice problem to have.
Mm-hmm. And again, I need to go back to our history, but, you know, we knew the first year we were, this is going to happen. We knew day one, we'd have to get rid of the portable, add an elementary, and then that would lead over to addressing middle school capacity.
We're, we're just now getting to the point where, when we open our doors, yes.
And this has only been how many years, and we've done it, I think we've done an excellent job in addressing those concerns and with the funds we have available.
Okay, um, thank you, everybody. Um, let's turn our attention to, um, the Field House, the request from a private donor that the, the school, the board commit the district to, um, a million dollar gift. The superintendent explained to you how they wanted it split? I mean, how the donor intends to split their donation, which we could definitely model ours after, if that is, is that your source. So, um, the floor is, and as soon as these are tallied and everything, I will shoot you the list, and, um, we will, we can go from there. Floor's open for the Field House. You've spoken as the committee member. Miss O, if anybody else have any thoughts, or...
I was just gonna pull up the term sheet, just so that we could, just, I think it's good just to maybe go through what exactly the terms are, would that be fair?
Well, roughly, they are seven hundred thousand to the Field House, three hundred thousand to Fine Arts, uh, with a five-year payout.
Yeah.
And that's roughly. And if the district and the city do not donate, then this is on the table.
And that would impact arts as well, because there would be no money there for arts.
Right.
Right. Is part of that, is for the arts, I mean, it would have a-
Then the auditorium or the band room, everything would go on this ground.
And that's three hundred, that's three hundred thousand to arts.
Three hundred thousand. The donor has agreed to that, and then, we, how we choose to divide, if we choose, which would be a vote, if we choose to do that, then how we divide it is our decision, same with the city.
So theoretically, if everybody gives three hundred thousand, then we'd have nine hundred thousand.
I don't know that that's how I read the term sheet, though.
I know from speaking to the donor, that's the donor's intent.
Okay.
Now, I'm not looking at the sheet you are, but that's the conversation.
Okay.
So, this is your chance to ask any questions, to have any discussion, because this will come up before us, because this is gonna require us to vote. Which we can do.
Um... So, what we'll do at our March nineteenth meeting is go through our priority list that's gonna go to the FAC, would that be fair?
Yes.
Um, so that we could all vote and agree and have our dialogue about what our priority list is going, and that would include this or not?
And then the FAC presentation is the twenty-seventh.
Right.
So, do you, do you want to contemplate this? Do you have any other questions?
My question is that when it was presented to us for approval, they weren't asking us for money.
No. At the time, I believe Mr. Brunz had, I'm sorry. At the time, I believe our donor had-
At the time that the, the community group approached us, and Ms. Fisher, please help me, because you were chair at the time, they were simply asking for permission to begin fundraising. And that's all we granted, was then permission to begin fundraising.
And that we would support them in their fundraising, but we were giving no funding at that time.
And, and, and to be clear, that this isn't this fundraising group's terms. This is the donor's terms. So, a donor stepped up and said, well, get, excuse me, well, I will give you this amount of money, but I'd like to make sure that, whatever, I don't, I mean, y'all, y'all have had the conversations better, but that there's-
The donor met with certain individuals and said, this is what I propose. But, there would still be a significant, if, if I understand basically what the committee is looking at for finished product, um, that would be the Field House, the weight room, a potential classroom, and then to facilitate for the new facilities for the band. They would still have a significant amount of money to raise in order to, for the project to begin. And then, the next step for them would be to secure, um, if they're gonna do a loan, they've got to find an entity that can secure a loan for them.
The, we don't have a hard figure, or a firmer figure on the design yet, until we have that.
It's the same game we have for the new school, so, based on their early designs, we're talking fourteen thousand square feet, you know, times two hundred dollars, but that doesn't include the upgrades that they would have for the band area, the paddock, which would be the concession area, that'd include that funding, so.
Right.
So, horseshoes, we have big figures, we don't have enough.
So, what's the worst thing that would happen? I'm just gonna throw this up there. What's the worst thing that would happen that if the board said yes, we would commit our amount?
With restrictions.
With, well, yeah, or, or just to say, I mean, I think if you committed, that if the donor writes the check, then we will write our check. The donor has its own restrictions, right? I mean, it has to happen, um, the other, because there's actually a restriction in the term sheet that requires community involvement.
Right.
So, there is a, a catch there. So, that we would only be giving money if the project went forward.
If the committee fulfills its end of the deal.
That, that's right. And so, I'm just trying to think of, you know, so if we, so the question is, in my mind, not how much is the gap? Are they gonna do it? It's more, are, if it happens, are we committed? Because I think that's what I keep hearing, is we're kind of in that chicken or the egg. The same with the city, is somebody's gotta make a decision so that it can snowball, so that if the city, the district decides and the city decides, and I'm not saying which way, just a decision is made, then if they're positive, then the fundraising can go on. But right now, it's kind of at a stalemate. Nobody's really doing any fundraising.
I think as of forward, our decision is solely our decision.
That I completely agree.
And we cannot let anything influence that. I mean, it can't be depended on, well, if the city agrees or doesn't agree. It has to be our decision.
Exactly.
That we are committed to this project from a financial standpoint. We have to date only agreed to support it by allowing the committee to fundraise.
Absolutely.
So, the donor has said he will give this money if, if the board puts in so much and the-
City.
City puts in so much.
It's a match, it's a match.
Then the fundraising group has to go and raise how much.
We don't know yet.
So, to give you, so if we're just talking about the Field House project itself and not talking about the Fine Arts, the Field House project itself would be two point one million, seven hundred thousand from the city, some, and I'm over five years, but, seven hundred thousand from the city, seven hundred thousand dollars from the donor, seven hundred thousand from us. The building that they've designed is a fourteen thousand square foot building, so I'll do the-
Well, but I don't know that, I mean, I know that, so.
But I'll, but you're asking, you're asking the-
You're only talking hypotheticals, because they have not designed it yet.
Fourteen thousand times two hundred dollars.
The fundraising group has to go and do their thing. If they don't do their thing, we're not-
You're not getting-
Committed.
We're not committed.
So, you have fourteen thousand times two hundred dollars a square foot is two point eight million. And that doesn't include, you know, like I said, the-
The Fine Arts complex.
Yeah, the Fine Arts.
Ms. Fisher?
I just want to add, you know, from the beginning, I always hate to go back to from the beginning, but from the beginning, you know, we, the excitement of having our school district, part of that was that we could engage in projects that would include funding from our city, from our community, as well as our school district. So, I, I like to be open to this, and if it can benefit-
Both Fine Arts.
Fine Arts, as well as athletics, um, you know, I think it is a, um, and, and it's just two hundred thousand a year, not an outgoing of a million right off of that. Um, you know, I think this is something the board should, should try to support.
So, would we put it on our list as a part that this, we would be asking the city to fund for us, or would we be saying that we would fund this there on our own?
But I, I mean, from a personal standpoint, because as a board member, this has been a tough evolution for me, because from the fine arts aspect, it benefits a lot more children than the Field House does. And I tend to always err on the side of what's going to benefit the most and where it improves learning the most. So, it's, it's been an evolutionary process for me to even get here. I think if we commit to this, it is our project, aside from what we go to the FAC for, what we go, that's different.
And that's what I was trying to clarify, that this would not be some-
That's just my opinion.
No, that's, because, and I agree with Ms. Landers, because I really do have a hard time, because I know how much our Fine Arts needs some additional funding.
I definitely don't think we go to the FAC for this.
No, that's what I'm saying.
No, I, we're just, I'm just making sure we're clarifying.
So, that would be my question to you, is, so this isn't a discussion you want me to have to, to say, hey, this other group, we're committed to it.
No, this, and, and my mind is your chair, is, um, two separate votes on the nineteenth. We would be looking at the prioritization list that we would be delivering as part of the FAC presentation to the, that the superintendent will do. And then, whether or not we are committed, we will commit to a million dollars for the Field House, for the project at Houston High School, um, the athletic band complex, can we say that, rather than the Field House? Can we rename it?
I think athletic band complex. We were, we were toying with different names at the committee meetings.
I think that's better, that's more palatable for me.
Quick question, I know we were talking about, um, the need to do it in stages possibly. Would the first stage not include a band room?
Yeah, that is, that, that is also something we've discussed as a committee. It is under the same umbrella, but we're looking at a potential moving of the location of the band room to next, of the expand expansion to next to the band room in that green space. Um, and, and our thoughts were that it may be better to go ahead and move forward on that aspect in order to clear the way timeline-wise for the Field House to build as they get their, use, because that's, that's the desire, is to clear that space.
The goal for the, um, the goal for the band group is to not just replace a storage building. They want to have classroom space for the percussion group.
Yes.
They could also meet and practice too.
No, it definitely is.
And so, I would, so I would, that's a very valid point. So, for that, I would say that, thinking about this, is it's not an athletic, it's not just football. When you're adding classroom space for band, and when you're, I mean, there's a big part of this that I think is of huge benefit. And to your point, Becky, I think when we change the name, it will become more evident what's happening.
I think Field House sells it short.
Right, I agree.
Um, so, this only affects the band, this is not, I'm just saying, in that it doesn't really apply to choir and theater?
Not, not yet, but like I said before, I feel, I feel pretty good that we're gonna potentially come underneath that nine hundred.
Right.
And so, that that remainder, uh, will roll over into auditorium or other Fine Arts.
We perhaps could find ourselves in a situation where we could do much more-
Than we would think.
Than, than for the band. Um, but, back to Ms. Parker's question, there are a lot of moving parts to this that have to fall into place before ground is broken, before anything is done. And so, again, when you're talking about a middle school addition, this is again, something that we're gonna have to ask staff to supervise. So, that's why in looking at the timeline, we've got to be very intentional, that we've got to allow staff the opportunity to complete all of this, and then start the middle school. We can't ask staff to do four separate projects at a time. We don't, we don't literally have the staff to do that, and it's, it's, in this board member's mind, it's not responsible of us to expect them to give up their entire lives to, because we've committed them to all these projects. Is that a fair statement?
Fair statement. I don't even know if they committed twenty-four seven.
I, I would like, I would like for Mr. Kathy to get to watch the boys. A couple of games, or do a couple of things with the boys. But, um, anyway, so, anything else on the Field House? Okay, is there anything else you want to, um, speak to the superintendent about, about FAC? I know I've been, but not the floor.
The only thing I would mention is that, you know, we're talking about, we're not asking the city for money for the, um, band and that.
And the complex.
The complex, thank you, that's a better word. Um, but I think it might be good to let them know, so that they have a feel for what we're doing. Um, and that, I think it would be helpful to tee it up, to say that we would expect that this group will be coming to you, like they come to us.
It's been teed up.
I, I, I don't know that it's been teed up in a meeting where there are aldermen and there are commission members.
That's-
Um, and so, I think that that could be very beneficial and very helpful to this group to keep the momentum going. If, if we agree- If, if we agree, I mean, I'm not saying, that, it's all dependent on if we agree that this is something that we should do in our March nineteenth, I would just say that it could really benefit and help the momentum for this group and this project if we say this is what we're doing, we know that there's an ask coming for the city, just aware, we don't have to say what we want them to say, just to let them know that it's out there.
And that's something we can, you know, once, we still have a long way to go, there's still a vote that has to be taken.
I'm saying, if it, if we get to that point, and if it passes, I would have that as a recommendation.
If this board chooses to go that direction, then it's really incumbent on the committee to move this forward, not us. We're not driving this project, we're only contributing to it.
And, and I hear that, Betsy, but I'm not saying that we drive it, but I think helping them get a voice with the city is, I think that's something we do need to discuss, because I think that's been part of the problem, is getting the voice in front of the different leadership groups.
I think we have our priority list for CFP.
So from what I'm hearing, we're gonna have a vote on the nineteenth for the priority list?
For the CFP list, and the separate one for the...
And then on the twenty, then I'll have my marching orders for the twenty-seventh to go.
The athletic slash band complex.
Yes, sir. Are you comfortable with that, Ms. Landers?
And then what was the last one you said?
And then I have my marching orders to go forth to the FAC and...
And I would lay out the years, I mean, I'd lay out the...
I would agree.
Year and a half, and we, this, we need, I mean, we're giving you notice now, this is when we need whatever.
Well, and, and that's a good point, Ms. Landers, when, when we were talking about this, and if we're talking about the priorities and we're looking at what we're gonna take to the FAC, would it be good to look at like a one to two year, because would it be more palatable maybe for the city than, for example, for the boiler? Do we need all three million when we place the order, like if we're gonna buy it all, or would it span over the summer? Does that make sense, like if we get it approved and we start it next spring, would we need all the three million?
Help them with their fiscal year plan the same way that we do with county commission dollars, to say, we could stretch this for you, if you could give us X amount this year for the boiler project, then the next fiscal year.
You, you give, it's almost like an installment type, I mean, it might...
Although they do a five-year plan then.
They, they do, so I mean, but I'm just saying is that if we, it might be more palatable looking at it to say that over the next two to three years, this is what we're asking for, versus it looks like a huge amount in one year potentially, I don't know, I don't know if that would break out that, though, just a thought.
I can do that with the projects of when they start and when they finish.
And is there anything else, the superintendent has offered you an update, which I think there was something in your email you'd asked, so you have an update of where we are, we have an update, what's being done safety-wise, a lot's been done in the last ten days.
At that, at that March meeting, we will have recommendations for the board on facilities upgrades and the details on some of the things that we're doing with plans, but know that we are meeting with Lieutenant Shields, who's a member of the SWAT team here in the city of Germantown, Mr. Bland, Mr. Grace, they've attended trainings where they've been trained nationally, looking at safety standards, and know that we're looking at a, a lot of our procedures to refine them. We do think that we have a lot of good, solid things in place, because this has been something that we've been dealing with since Columbine, since Sandy Hook, that we know these issues. We see a lot of our growth and where we can improve is the post-event, like what happens with our other schools, if there's an event at one school, what's happening with central office staffing, so know that we'll have those types of details for you to be aware, but know that we are deeply involved in this process right now.
And is that an, I mean, is, is it almost like you're auditing the process, or are you, I mean, I don't, what is, is it something that y'all typically do, where you go through this?
It's a review, yeah, it's a review of our process, and, and really for us, it's the assistance of the Germantown Police Department, and we've also talked, I know you talked about FBI involved, because we've looked at who takes priority on the scene, because the reality is, if I show up to one of our schools and there's been an event, I'm not getting on the campus, y'all, we're not getting on the campus, they control that scene.
There's an emergency, don't even bother going, it's a emergency, because you're not gonna get on there.
So we talked about who has, who has command control of those facilities, so we have those types of details.
Okay.
And so that's why they're such a crucial component in this process.
And when...
Go ahead, no, I'm sorry, go ahead, Suzanne.
When you were, you're gonna share that with us at the March nineteenth meeting?
An overview, because, you know, as we've talked in the past, we don't want, not details as far as who goes where and where they're doing this, but we are gonna have a packet that Mr. Grace is working on for parents too, because I do think the details that we can improve on too is, for example, if there's a lockdown in front of Houston Middle School while they're dropping off.
Right, what do you do?
How do the parents know to see, how are they gonna be identified that there's a lockdown, how are they gonna proceed, where are they gonna, so I think it's that type of communication. And then the trainings, of course, that we will have for staff and students, just making sure that we're being thorough with those trainings, so all that's coming. So there will be a large amount of information that is for public consumption, but know that we're also refining the behind-the-scenes procedures of who's handling what duties.
That's right.
And I would say touring the police yesterday, department meeting with the SWAT team, I'm very impressed with what Germantown, I mean, our SWAT team is number one in the country almost, and so it was very impressive, I felt very comfortable about them.
And they won several awards, yes.
Are we looking at the mental health aspect of this as well, in terms of follow-up access?
Yes.
Also, I spoke briefly with the chairman about the potential for parent training, partnering with Germantown Municipal Council, PTO, possibly offering something district-level for parents, so, because a lot of times, you know, teenagers and pre-teens go through angst, and it's hard to tell, is this normal, is this not normal, so how can we provide tools for our parents?
Yes.
So that they can help identify, because that's, it's a community, this is a community issue.
That's part of that training and talking about what resources we provide, we're one of the few districts that has a licensed clinical social worker, and this law is fabulous, and so, yes, Mr. Bland has, has sort of a crucial component of this team to look at what services provided, what we're doing for, for students, and how we're responding to these issues, to know that that's, that's part of this process too.
Thank you, I know you discussed that at our coordinating, so.
There's a, is a calendar or not, but in these situations, I've found that people are anxious, and they, and sometimes they just wanna say why they're anxious. And I think given the amount of emails that we've gotten, and y'all have gotten, and sometimes it's just having, the community having a voice.
That's right.
Is there something that we could do that would, I know we have the packet, but to maybe make ourselves available, not really, but the administration, to just listen and answer, whether it's going to PTO meetings, whether it's, you know, hosting a town hall, is there something where we could open ourselves up to have them be able to give feedback and just listen and answer questions?
And I, and I think that's, that's what we need to do as part of this process, so, the reason, Mr. Grace has taken a greater leadership role in this process too, because I think a big part of this is gonna be on the communication to parents about what can they expect, so the details, like we've been dealing with these incidents. So just clarity on some, two that we've had in the past twenty-four hours, I can't share, and, and no parents wanted to know what happened in Carver, I don't know all the details of the events that happened in the Collierville incidents, I don't know them, because those students are my students, and by law, their administration can't tell me the exact details of what happened. The same thing that happened with our student that we recently had a threat in Houston Middle School, I can't share you the consequences or what supports we're gonna provide for that family or student because of FERBA, because of, you know, the legal rights of what I can tell you, the consequences for that student. And I think some times, parents wanna know, tell me exactly what happened to the child, how long is this suspension, what are you doing to provide support? I can't always share that information, so I know that there's angst that's always created, I know the second that I send those emails, they're gonna be upset, parents saying, I want to know how long, you know, they're suspended for, and I can't tell all of that.
And I think it goes beyond the specifics of that, I think it's more, what are we doing, you know, so I'm really referencing the emails of, you know, what processes you're reviewing, and obviously, we're reviewing them.
Yes.
And having said that, we have these emails that are questioned, is, would the protocol be, as we've talked about, maybe the chairman to respond so that we understand what that message is?
The chairman is taking her iPad on the airplane.
So that we can act, so, I mean, just so that we can, we can send the same message, and it sounds like there's gonna be a lot of information shared at the March nineteenth meeting, which I think, again, having a date for some people to really have that to listen for, I think it's comfort.
The most important message that the chair can impart on behalf of the district, behalf of the board, is that we are taking them active, we're being proactive by involving all of the principals in, in the schools, reviewing our protocols, working with the police department, I think, just letting parents know, and that more information will be forthcoming. But when you're questioned, when you're asked, it is for their child's safety that we don't share crisis plans.
Absolutely.
And we don't share what will happen and, and certain things that are in place for their safety. And the hardest thing to impart to a parent is if there is a lockdown at your school, do not go. Every parent runs, and I can tell you, it hampers every situation, you know, the people who need to be there are there. The superintendent will be there, the police, the SWAT, whomever will be there, but they don't need parents there, because that just hampers the ability to control the situation, it happened at Parkland, it happened at Sandy Hook, it happened at Columbine, I mean, you can go down the list.
And that's part of our communication too, to tell them, because they are gonna want to be there and get their kids as soon as they can, and make sure that we don't have another further incident, like how do they pick up their child, how are they showing their identification, we will have staging grounds, and that's part of what Mr. Grace is gonna do with that communication side of it, to tell those parents.
And that's the best thing, you know, that if something does happen, and you will, well, there's a plan in place of where you go to pick up your kids, and...
And again, I think partnering with GMCPTO may be a way to help get that message out, whether it's, you know, parent training for crisis management, I mean, that, and have an event, materials distributed, whatever, but that's a, that's a ready-made set of volunteers ready to help make, facilitate this communication.
All right, this has been a very fruitful discussion, I think we've accomplished a lot, thank you for your time.
Mr. Jones has one more, sorry.
Can we introduce the board to the technology initiative?
Yes, yes, I'll let you take the lead.
This is just as a supplement to what we've been talking about for our capital needs, I think we need to do something similar for technology, our infrastructure, and our one-to-one initiative, as we look at the use of current revenues or resources as well as our reserves. In the past, we've funded some of our purchases through leases that happened, or with a loan from the city, and with our reserve position, that may not be an option, so we may have to look at purchasing outright cycles, I guess, of computer replacements.
So one of the things that, so when we talk about the twelve million, our reserve actually could be higher than that this year, so one of the things that we're gonna look at this year is we're coming up time for, to renew the teacher computers, so this is part of the budget process, but it may be more part of the capital discussion, their request may be for us, instead of building our reserve up higher, to getting closer to thirty million, to use that money to outright buy the teacher laptops instead of doing a four-year lease. So know that that's a discussion that Mr. Jones is...
And we'll have a new school price.
Yes, yes, so know that this is all...
Do you know how much we will have?
Benefits and pros and cons, I'm, I'm, I mean, I'm thinking lots of them at that, so.
So, when it's presented, there'll be pros and cons.
Right, right, it's just really, historically, it's been just a cash flow issue, and the city's helped us out with that, but that...
That purchase versus leasing.
Right, right, we can show you that as far as savings on interest costs.
I think for just...
As we build our long-term financial plan, we're gonna have to consider this as a component.
Fine, fine, thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, we're looking forward to that information.
Reminding me.
Very productive meeting, we've given the superintendent his marching orders for the FAC. The meeting for the FAC is March the twenty-seventh, if possible, I would, the chair would like the board to be in attendance. We, however, do not have a participatory role, nor will we be speaking, we will be there to strictly back up the superintendent.
I have the time at, at five o'clock, is that accurate?
I don't, I do not have the time.
Okay.
But you will get a reminder, and we have the nineteenth, so to confirm the date, because as with everything, it's always tentative.
Got it.
So our next meeting is the nineteenth, I have on here, we're gonna be voting on school zones, is that still?
No, no.
I would not recommend, I still think we have time to review the...
Okay, that's what's on your calendar, so on this double...
I have six o'clock in my calendar for the CFP meeting.
I have six.
Could I ask for a spot on the work session on the nineteenth, just to talk about TLM stuff, just to kinda give everybody just a quick update on some of the bills that have come out, and just to kinda close out a little bit of that, about the...
We might add it, add you to the work session.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anything else to come, any further business to come before the board during this work session, not business, but discussion items? If there are none, then we stand adjourned.
Thank you.